I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting, the Quincy City Council, uh, tonight for budget hearings. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Charles Baker, June 16th, 2021, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, Channel 9, Government Access, relative any and all matters pending in this committee, including but not limited to. And we are on the second section, Thursday, June 24th, 5:30 departmental budget hearings. I also would like to read the open meeting law language pursuant to the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible. So this evening, we get the second half of the city's budget. I'd like to thank everybody. Last night was a long night. We got a lot done. Tonight, we have another, a long list of departments. I'd like to remind everybody to try to keep it to that 15, 20 minute, um, period of time so we can move along and try to stay targeted on, uh, the subject, uh, which is the budget. So with that, I'd like to start off with, uh,
I'm gonna call a quick roll first.
I'm sorry, Jen. Please call a roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Counsel, uh, Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
Eight members.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks for keeping me straight. I'd like to start off with Personnel Director Patty McGowan. Good evening, Patty.
Good evening.
Lead off with the Human Resources Budget.
Great. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Harris to approve. Any questions on the HR budget? Seeing none? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Nice job, Patty.
Thank you.
Uh, second up is the, um, health insurance line, Patty. Go right ahead.
Okay, so for the fiscal year 2022, medical insurance line item, we're budgeting for an increase of approximately...
I'm sorry, Patty. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Harris. Any comments on the motion? President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Patty. I just had a question about, um, could you just tell me what the tuition reimbursement line is?
Tuition reimbursement is for, um, that is part of the supervisory union. They have $1,000 in there. It's part of their collective bargaining agreement. So any work-related type of, um, classes or courses, they're eligible for reimbursement for that.
Perfect. Okay. And then do you anticipate that, um, again, now that I know that everyone's plans last year were obviously thrown out the window, but, um, I think here every year you've, you've been pretty active with using this line item. So do you anticipate next year that you'll start picking that back up again?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam President. Chair recognizes Counselor Debona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patty, thank you for all your hard work over there at Human Resources over the last year. Um, just on the health insurance, real quick, the medical, um, it looks like we're going up 1.47 million this, um, upcoming FY '22. Um, we had a little bit of more of an increase the previous year to, to FY '21. Do you anticipate it averaging around that, um, 1.5 million per year increase in the premiums?
It, it's hard to say. I mean, we have a, um, we had a 9% rate increase this year, um, on our active plans. However, we had less enrollees on our plan and also because the city's contribution rate for the PPO plan has, is going from 80% to 78% for fiscal year '22. So even though it's a 9% rate increase, it's about, you know, a 3% um, increase. With being new, you know, this only is our second year with being self-insured. Um, what we're trying to do is always, as I stated last year, trying to be fiscally conservative with the rates that we're, um, setting so that we can put more money into our Internal Service Fund until we get an adequate reserve. So in the future years, when we do get higher increases, we can use the, you know, that, that additional surplus in the Internal Service Fund to offset the rate increases.
Yes, I know a few years ago, we went over from the GIC over to the Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's been a, I think it's been a great plan for the city of Quincy and all the employees that are on this plan. Um, I know back in GIC, when the state, I think it was a year and a half ago, they were having issues where they were gonna, they were gonna decrease their, um, carriers from like, I think, when I say nine or seven to three. And the folks went bizarre. And then they said, well, we, we only have these three to pick from and, and I'm glad we got out when we could. So, um, I'm happy to have Blue Cross and, um, I, I think the other folks do too. Uh, I just, I know that this is one of the five major components of an increase each year. Obviously, police, fire, um, schools pensions, which we've kind of like tackled a little bit. And then there are obviously this medical insurance. So, um, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else with questions on the health insurance? Seeing none? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Patty, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, um, Catherine Logan, uh, Purchasing Department. Good evening, Catherine.
Motion to approve.
Good evening.
Uh, good emotional prove from Counselor Kane?
Yes.
That was said then? Thanks, Counselor. Uh, any conversation on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Catherine, thanks.
Good night.
Megan Allen. Library's up. Hi, Megan.
Good evening.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Oh, oh, I, sorry, President, didn't hear you. Um, motion to approve. Any, uh, discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Mister, Mister Chair, I have my hand raised.
Sorry, Counselor Palmucci, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, thank Megan for the work that you and your staff do, especially in these, um, challenging times. Uh, and, you know, I, I said it last night about, uh, the Council on Aging, if, 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 uh, folks are not, uh, taking advantage of the services and programming offered by, uh, the Council on Aging and the library, just not getting their, their, uh, their, their tax dollars worth. Because there is so much for every age group from, you know, very little, from the playgroups that, uh, that you have to, to very old. Um, there's something for everybody there. Uh, so it's, it's amazing that you've been able to keep the level of service that you have had over the course of the pandemic. I just wanted to thank you and your team and encourage you to keep up the good work.
Very much. I will pass it along.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Phelan, then Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Megan, again, you just did a great job over the pandemic. You were innovators. You came up with ways to still, to still keep the library going. So I congratulate you and your staff on that. I do have one question, though. Where, where are we with the Wallaston Library and Wallaston Center? Is that open regular now or is that just still?
Yes, both, I'm sure, and the Wallaston Branch Libraries are open now. Um, for in-person services, so, uh, patrons can visit. Borrow books, use a computer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that is open now. Uh, is it, is it open the same hours as it was before or are we, uh, still restricted?
Right now, those two branches are open Monday through Thursday, 1 to 5. Uh, we probably aren't gonna be able to add their, the rest of their hours until, right after Labor Day. That's what I'm aiming for. We have a fair number of, um, staff openings right now and, uh, we have several staff on extended leave. So we're just a little bit, um, understaffed. And I want to be able to reopen the main library at our full hours, at least Monday through Saturday, uh, as soon as we wrap up the carpeting project. So, um, yeah, we'll, we'll add the hours at the branches as soon as we are back up to our regular complement of, of staff.
Very good. Again, I, I have nothing but good things to say about the library and the library staff. And it's one more hours in Wallace than this, over this home. But I, I feel like we have the constraints that we have. And, uh, I thank you and your staff for continuing to provide great service for the residents of Quincy.
Thank you. And we're just as eager to get back to normal hours as soon as we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you very much. Um, I just had a quick question. I, I know that the, that the rug is being installed right now at the Thomas Crane, um, library. So when is the anticipation that the library will be open for your hopes?
Um, we, uh, expect the carving project to wrap up by the end of next week. Uh, that's what I am hearing in the last day or two from the, the carpet company. Uh,
I know that they have the right carpet.
I'm sorry?
I heard that you won't have the right color carpet, but you'll have a carpet.
No, we've got the right carpet. We've, uh, we definitely got the right carpet. Um, and...
Said something last night, but yeah.
And then we're, um, we have, uh, the holiday weekend interferes a little bit. We were losing a couple of staff workdays. So, uh, we'll probably be announcing a firm opening date by the end of the day tomorrow. Just to kind of get our ducks in a row. And, um, there's been, uh, a lot of aftermath as we deal with the end of the, the carpeting project. We just have a lot of work to do to get the place back together again.
Of course.
Yeah.
I just know people are very excited. They, you know, they, I know you are as well to see people in the library. Um, I know, um, I know one person who's my 93rd real father that can't wait to come back in and, and take out books. Um, he spent every Saturday there forever and, uh, he's been, he's been taking out books online. But I, but he did ask me to ask that question. So this is for my dad. So he just wants to know when he can come back in and see your staff.
Yes, we, we will be, uh, we're very close to finalizing a date, uh, that we can commit to. And, um, we'll probably send out a email to all of our registered cardholders within the next couple of days so that everybody will know what the opening day is.
Well, I want to thank you for all your hard work because like, I think, I'm, I'm saying what other, other people have said. But the library is kind of the heart of our city as well, where people, it's a gathering spot for people to come and use. It's, it's a, it's a great resource for people. And I know, um, a lot of people use it. And they're looking forward to be open and having that normality back again. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for, uh, Counselor, uh, President Liang?
Thank you. Hey, Megan, just a quick question about the, um, Sunday hours. So are we gonna be doing Sunday openings once the, the North Quincy branch opens up? Or are we gonna do them at the other branches as well?
Uh, Sunday hours will be at the main library. And right now, I'm anticipating with the other hours that, um, after Labor Day, we'll be going, adding the Sunday hours back in at the main library.
Awesome. Thank you. And then just the, um, only other question I have is if you can just keep us all posted on the opening for North Quincy. I, I appreciate when you walk me through the space and I was able to actually see the progress. Um, but I know all of us are excited to see it open. So if you could just keep us posted on the opening date, we'd love to celebrate with you.
Oh, yeah. I actually was there today and it looks like the carpet installation might start by the end of next week. So that's gonna be a, a, a move forward. And, uh, we're still looking at end of summer, beginning of September, opening for the branch. So yes, I will definitely, as soon as it gets a little bit firmer, we'll plan some kind of a open house and we'll welcome everyone to come and join us and enjoy the branch.
A phenomenal project manager on top of everything else that you do. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Liang. Any other questions for Megan? Seeing no other questions, we had a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Megan. Always a pleasure to see you and, and it's good that we're back. Well, we're semi-back to normal and things are opening up again, especially the library. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up is, um, Marley Casali. And, um, Mr. Casali is the new, um, Commissioner of Public Health. And welcome. And I'll let you, uh, go through your department. Motion made by Mr. Harris to approve the Health Department's budget. Any comments on the motion? I see, um, Counselor Palmucci, then President Liang.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just had a question about the, um, uh, line item 512607. Is, is that a new, uh, a new part-time position?
Hi, good evening. Um, yes, that is a, um, part-time position. It represents one full-time nurse and one part-time nurse, uh, to assist us during, uh, COVID and going into the future, um, in case we see a, another wave. We've had increased calls, uh, increase of camps. Um, so that represents the part-time nurse in that budget item.
Is there a part-time nurse on staff now?
Yes. So right now, we have a nurse coordinator, uh, which is line item 512609. That is our nurse coordinator. And, um, we have the other item that represents the one full-time nurse and one part-time nurse. So there are a total of three nurses.
Got it. I guess what I'm asking is just for this, this line item. So it's the addition of a part-time nurse. I get that because there was already somebody there, right? So it's an increase of 34,000, which represents a part-time nurse. But what I'm saying is that person already on staff?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And they're getting paid out of some other source of money, I assume, correct?
Correct. Uh, that would be the ARPA, uh, the American Recovery Act.
Recovery Plan. Okay. All right. And how long has that person been on, on board?
Um,
I ballpark, I mean...
I, I believe maybe in the beginning of May, towards the end of April.
Okay. And how's, how's your, um, overall, listen, we're in, you know, we're coming out of the end of a pandemic. I'm not gonna move to, uh, a part-time nurse here. Uh, uh, you know, it's the, uh, the amount of work, um, and success that, that this department, um, has, has produced over the, the past year and a half. I mean, I'm not gonna, not gonna touch it. It's, uh, done a tremendous amount of work with what you have. Uh, my question more is, uh, do you have everything you need for the future? You know, do you feel like you have enough staff to deal with where we're at now, where we could be in the future? Or, you know, what's, what are your thoughts?
Um, right now, I see everything going, uh, smoothly. Uh, in the future, that is something that, you know, I can evaluate with our, uh, department and see if we need to make any additions to, uh, help our staff, whether in the food inspections, uh, another additional nurse, um, uh, an additional translator. Um, so that's something that we can evaluate, but it has been, uh, as significant to have an extra nurse here on staff. Uh, it's been a tremendous help.
And you guys aren't doing the contract, the contact tracing anymore, right? The state took that over a while ago?
Yes, the state took that over, I believe, in January.
Yeah.
Uh, towards the end of, uh, Ruth Jones' retirement, uh, the state took that over. Correct.
And, um, I'm blanking on what I was gonna ask you. Oh, uh, as far as, um, uh, vaccination among, um, city employees, do we have any type of program, uh, mandatory vaccination program for frontline workers? I'm thinking, you know, I, I mean, I think most of the police and fire are all vaccinated. Uh, but I'm thinking like, you know, DPW guys, the water department guys who may, maybe knocking on somebody's door, you know, saying, hey, we're doing some work in the area, things like that. Do we have any type of policy or procedure for making sure our frontline employees are requiring them to be vaccinated?
Um, I don't believe at this time there are any requirements, uh, but I can definitely consider that and talk to the administration and see if that is something that, uh, we can do going forward for, uh, other departments.
And have we taken any type of survey as to, um, the vaccination, I guess, rate or, um, of city employees? Like, do you know, I mean, not everyone got, I mean, I know the first responders, they got it through, through, um, Manit, our partnership with, with Manit. But I'm, you know, technically, I'm a, well, not technically, I'm a city employee. I went down to somewhere in Dartmouth and got mine. But like, the city wouldn't know that. Do we, have we done any type of survey in terms of, um, who's vaccinated and who's not on, on staff?
Uh, that is a great question. Um, that is something that I have considered to possibly do in the future. Uh, we don't have those numbers right now, uh, but definitely something that we can do with the possible help of, uh, an intern doing, conducting that type of a survey, uh, in the city. Um, one thing that I will point out is, um, our city is doing a great job with the vaccination. Um, I think, you know, Cynthia Sierra, uh, in the Manic Community Health Team, uh, with the 35,000 vaccinations that they've done so far. Uh, our city right now, uh, our vaccination rate is at about a 60.35%, uh, which is about 2% over the Massachusetts, um, the, the Massachusetts, uh, goal right now. So, um, we're doing great. Uh, we're continuing to see vaccinations, um, and we'll definitely consider doing a type of survey in the cities. Um, and I can definitely get you those numbers.
Sure. What was that number? It was 60 what?
It is 60.35. And that is, as of last week, we have not received the numbers for, uh, this week yet.
That's terrific. That's terrific to hear, knowing that, you know, 60% of the residents have been vaccinated. It, it kind of makes me feel safer, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, should make folks feel better. But, okay, I'll follow up with Mr. Walker about the, um, the overall, um, vaccination of city employees. I just, just to throw my two cents in, I just think if we're gonna have anybody public facing, I mean, if, if somebody who interacts with no one and is either working from home or, you know, works away from, is separated and segregated, that, you know, maybe they don't have to be vaccinated. But anybody, you know, who I think, uh, is employed by the city, performing a task, a job, uh, function, um, for the city that interacts with the public, I, I would be loath to think that we shouldn't do something to make sure they get vaccinated or move them to a position where they're perhaps not public facing. You know, I mean, people have all sorts of reasons not to get vaccinated. I'm not gonna get into that. And there are some very legitimate ones that, um, that people have. So I just don't want to put the public at risk. And people don't have to lose their job, but I don't want to put the public at risk. Cause I assume when someone, if someone from the DPW knocks on my door to tell me there's a water main leak or something, or they're gonna be shutting off my water, um, I, I would, I would hope the city wouldn't send someone who's unvaccinated to knock on my door. That's all I'm saying. So...
Um, one, one thing I'd like to point out is we, we use the honor system. So if that individual is not vaccinated, um, they would wear a mask, uh, during, um, either inside the buildings or, uh, on inspection.
Okay. And unvaccinated, uh, employees, we're not requiring, they're not required to wear a mask?
So vaccinated employees are not required, um, per the state guidelines.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I, I was in court the other day and a judge told someone to take their mask off. I was like, wait a minute, what? So yeah, those, those requirements are changing as we go, you know, but...
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for, um, for stepping into the breach, uh, when you did and, and leading the department through a very difficult time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if somebody moved approval, but I would if they didn't.
Counselor Harris did, Counselor, but thank you. Um, Chair recognizes President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Marley. Congratulations on the new position. I know you have issues to fill with Ruth leaving, but the transition, on our end of it anyway, seems to have been seamless. So congratulations. Um, I have two questions for you. Um, one, I frankly can't do anything about because we can't add anything to the budget, but it's the overtime line item. So obviously, I think when I saw that, it was 4,000% over what was budgeted. It was very obvious why, um, what's been going on this last year. But coming into this budget cycle, you kept it very low. You kept it at only 1,000 as well. Um, but obviously, we are still in the midst of this pandemic. And, you know, I imagine that your office is still working, um, overtime. And so I'm just curious as to, you know, if and when you do obviously need more resources additional to the thousand for overtime, where are you gonna be able to get those funds from? Because again, I can't add to this budget, but I just want to make sure you have the support you need to do the work that, you know, we ask of all of you.
Um, that's a great question. Um, we will look into that once, um, we come across it. As of right now, um, the numbers continue to stay low. Uh, we haven't had any complaints at any restaurants. Um, so at, at the present time, um, you know, I don't think there is a need for that overtime budget. But when it comes to the point and we do see a spike and, you know, hypothetically, if a mandate comes across that we need masks and complaints come across, um, I believe that, you know, we can do something, uh, with the state or even the administration, um, and, and get some overtime from those, uh, from that budget to, uh, to fund our staff.
Okay. Thank you. Just if you can, um, again, just keep us posted on that. I wanted to just make sure. Just looking at this, I don't think in the last five, six years that I've done this, that I've ever seen, um, something go 4,000%, it's 4,000% over what was budgeted. But again, it's obviously understandable why, you know, you needed, um, or, you know, Ruth needed that much in overtime. I just, I was shocked to see that you hadn't asked for more. And obviously, we want to make sure that you have what you need. Um, but the second piece actually is on the other end of it, which is the line item for Pump Out Boat Energy. Um, I'm just looking to see that that hasn't been spent in the last, I think, four fiscal years. So I just want to have an understanding of what that's for and why it's still needed moving forward.
So with the Pump Out Boat, we just got that up and going. Um, we had to, uh, order a new boat. Uh, we had to put, uh, we had to make sure that it was, uh, fully equipped with, uh, following the state guidelines of what's necessary to fund the boat, uh, for the pump out. Um, it is also reimbursed by the Clean Vessel Act. Uh, the Clean Vessel Act reimburses us 75%. Um, and that boat is ready to go. Um, we do have the employees as well, um, that have, uh, gone through HR to, um, who are, who are qualified to do this job.
Okay. All right. Great. So I'll be interested to see what the, um, what the spend down on that line item looks like this year. And again, if you need less or need more, you know, I'm looking forward to that conversation. But thank you for explaining that, Marley. I appreciate it. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Marley. Welcome to the job. Welcome to, uh, being here in, in the city and, uh, look forward to working with you over the coming, uh, coming years. Um, a question I have is on the, uh, the, the pest control. And I realize this is something that can be, um, I've called your department. They're very good. They, they jump on, even during pandemics, a couple of times I had a call, Sue Jones, Ruth Jones, before you were involved. And, uh, they got on it right away. Is, I, I'm noticing that the entire line hasn't been spent. Is that meaning that we're getting less complaints?
Um, so before taking this role, um, I was the one that pretty much was doing the rat complaints in the city for about two and a half years. Um, we did see significant increase in rodent complaints, uh, back in 2019 when I, uh, had originally started. Uh, in 2020, uh, we did see a little bit of a decrease, uh, not in complaints per se, um, but we, we noticed less activity. Um, and we, we have spent majority of that budget line. There is about, I believe, $40,000 left, uh, that has yet to pay for the month of June. Uh, but, you know, the complaints are still high, um, normal levels. But we are planning to do a type of, uh, rodent map to, and collect some data to see what the difference has been. And we are in the process of that right now. And I can get you that information, um, as soon as that's available with our GIS system, um, comparing 2819, 2020, 2021, if you'd like.
I, I would love to get something like that. I know they sporadically come up. We go through stretches where we don't have any in the area. Seems when there's some development or something like that, that also, uh, gives a spike in it. But I can honestly say every time I called the Health Department, and I'm glad to know it was you doing it, Marley. Because, like, obviously Ruth called you and you jumped right on it. So we had, I had no complaints with the way the department is. And unfortunately, in an older city like we are, this does tend to happen. But, um, and I'm glad to see that you're using all the money you got because those can be some of the most annoying complaints that I get from residents. So, um, so great to have you on board. Look forward to working with you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, Marley, welcome and congratulations. And I do have a question. I, I don't really want to talk about this, but you, you, you were the person who we, who Ruth would send out. So who will you be sending out? I can't imagine that you're gonna be able to do all those things. So do you have somebody that's gonna be taking over that kind of role or?
Yes. So, uh, we currently had our Housing Code Enforcement, Mike Magrory, uh, move over into that role. Um, and he has started that role. uh, move over into that role, um, and he has started that role uh for about two weeks now. Um, so all of the rat complaints are being handled by uh Mike Magrory. Um, and as we um continue to fill a couple of positions here, um, where it's, it's basically been Tim Marble as well and myself.
Okay, so do you have open positions that you're filling now? Is that your thing or?
Um, so right now, we have filled one of our sanitaryant positions, um, which which um Tim Marble has moved over to the chief sanitaryant position, and uh Stephen Cobble has come over to uh the environmental sanitaryant position.
Okay, and what does the environmental sanitaryant, what does that person do?
So that person will conduct demos, rooming houses, uh body art inspections, tanning, salon inspections, um, any heat complaints uh when that timer arrives, um, and any housing complaints um that come into our office. And also demos, I'm not sure if I mentioned it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna switch back to pandemic.
Yep.
Uh, and just out of curiosity, I know that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna knock on wood because I hope our numbers stay low and I hope, you know, when we hearing things about, you know, the Delta and the next, you know, the next um, the next wave of things, you know, sixty percent of our population, is that you said they were all Quincy? Quincy people, that, that's the numbers that you were getting back from Manette, sixty percent was all Quincy residents, right?
That number comes from the state.
Okay.
Um, so the state DPH sends that information out to um myself on uh weekly, and that arrives on Friday. And that comes from the state, yeah.
Okay, so, so the number sixty in Quincy, which is great. I, I agree, that's great. But you worked really closely with Manette um during the pandemic, and I was just wondering if there's any learnings that we found from what we did to prepare for if we do go back into a situation, how you can ramp back up. I'm assuming that those, that you're in touch with them and that you're kind of looking at how other people have done it as well, so that we can be, if we need to, we can be engaged and, and up and ramped up very quickly.
Yes, um, I have met with uh Cynthia Sierra within the past week. Um, we plan on meeting several times uh just to plan uh in case we do see another wave in the future, how quickly we can um get everything together, set up the tents, set up the testing centers, vaccination sites. Um, so we, we have, uh, we are gonna be meeting quite frequently to make sure that all of those bases are covered, along with our emergency preparedness plan as well.
Yeah, I just say that because I think it's kind of amazing how um, how it was hard for every community, but, you know, getting ramped up for this, I mean, all of us, I think when we first went into this, we all thought it was just gonna be, you know, it was two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, and as we know, it's been a long time, but you know, the idea we think we're out of the woods and I hope we really are, but if something was to happen, we need to kind of stay diligent about being able to do those things. And then also, there's just so much um learning and reading, and, and I know you're, you know, it's just a lot, so just to be able to have somebody else to be able to really discuss those things that and to be able to stay on top of it, I think it's really important, and I know you're on top of it, but I just, I just, it's just a lot. It's, it's a big responsibility, and I, I just, I, I appreciate the efforts that are being done, but I also recognize the work that has to go into that, and congratulations, because I know you're, you just recently created, I think it was your second masters, right?
Correct, my second masters. Thank you very much.
So I know that you are up for all of that research, but it's just a lot, and I just, you know, I think that it's a, it's just a lot of, um, there's a lot of information that's out there, and we just want to make sure we're staying on top of it, and that you have the right um support to be able to do that. I want to make sure that you have that, so thank you very much and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words. Um, you know, uh, just to follow up on that, you know, I'm, I'm very determined, very motivated. Um, so, you know, I, I, I made sure I stay up on with the Delta variants and anything that the state does, uh, attending the seminars and um, again, working with Cynthia Sierra has been great and everything that they do at Manette. Um, and once we, once we come up with a plan, you know, I'm happy to share that with you.
Yeah, I know you're on top of it. I mean, I, I, I know, we, we've discussed some things in the past, so I know this is your passion, and I'm glad, glad your passion is here, and um, it's, it's, like I said before, this, this role um, human services is prior to a pandemic may seem like something that wasn't, there was just a lot you had to do anyway, but it was in multiple different directions. You still have those same things, multiple different directions, inspections, animal pest control, everything, but now you have the added weight of, you know, real health issues that could happen in our community, so I just, I, I, I welcome you aboard and I thank you for your, I, I hope you have a lot of energy, because I think that's what you need in this department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor DeBarna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, congratulations, Marley. Welcome to um the position. Um, your predecessor, Ruth Jones, uh, you're welcome. Um, you know, it was really nice to see you come out of the department where you kind of know the ins and outs of Quincy. Um, thank you for all your help on the rat control over the last few years. You've been, uh, been a great help. Um, thank you for all your hard work with the COVID as well. Um, just to back up a little bit with Counselor Phelan, so GIC, GIS system, are you gonna be able to track all the clusters of um complaints on the uh pest control situation, the rats?
Yes, um, and, and that's a great question. Um, yes, we will be tracking uh to see where we, where our hotspots are, uh, where we get the most frequent complaints um in each ward and on each street, how many times that we've been out there, how many times we baited the property as well. Um, so all that has been entered, um, is be, is currently being entered as well. Um, and then once we have that data um ready to go, we will send that to our GIS administrator uh and make sure that we get a map printout, and again, I'm, I'm happy to share that with you and uh Counselor Phelan.
Thank you. Um, well, how far are you gonna go back? To what year?
Um, we, we can go back to when I first started, when we got the first three hundred thousand dollars uh into the budget. So we can go back to um twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen.
That, that would be great, because I know prior to Ruth Jones, Drew Shealy, um, all three of you have been fantastic with getting on top of it, um, calling in the weekends, you guys have all come out on weekends, Saturdays, Sundays, evenings. So I really appreciate that, being on top of it. It helps out the residents that have to deal with the, with the situation, and um I know, starting with Drew Shealy back, back very, um, a while ago, um, with all his educational um packets and, and, and different meetings um in the neighborhood to, to educate folks on the pest, so thank you for, for everything that you do, and I'm looking forward to the future, and um hopefully, we, we don't have a resurgence of um the Delta variants, I guess I can call it. Um, I know that most people, obviously, you said sixty point three five, a third, sixty point three five percent. Is that the second, a second dose of the shot, or is that first?
Fully vaccinated.
Fully vaccinated, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Marley.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from Marley?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just um have a few words.
You sure can.
You know, uh, thank you, everybody, for the kind words and the congratulations. Um, you know, I, I understand there are big shoes to fill. Um, you know, I, I just want to give um, you know, a thank you to Manette and everything that they've done and everything that they are doing. Um, I want to thank Ruth Jones and Cynthia de Cristofaro, who have retired from our department. Um, they have uh taught me so much and um, you know, have, have given me a lot of experience. Um, so I, I thank them for their leadership and everything that they've done here. And of course, um, thank you to Tom, a co-Mister Mayor, uh, for everything and giving me the opportunity to represent uh the health department here in Quincy.
No, thank you, and um, Marley, I know you helped me a lot in Ward One, and um I got nothing but praise from folks down there on your response and your professionalism. And uh, so it was a uh, a great choice by the mayor to plug you in, so I know we're all looking forward to working with you in the years to come, and uh, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we had a motion from Counselor Harris. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Marley, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Counselors. Have a great night.
All right, and next up is um IT with Brian Glavin.
Motion to approve.
Motion up.
Motion to approve by Counselor Kane and almost by President Liang. Uh, any comments on the motion? Seeing none? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Next stop, Veteran Services.
Counselor to uh
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Harris. Any questions on Veteran Services on the motion? Seeing none? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, next up, uh, Mr. Fatsy's in the Planning Department. Good evening, Jim.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, James.
There we go.
Don't tell him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you to the counsel. Um, our our budget this year is basically level funded uh with an additional allocation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our contracted line. And if you could, uh, I'd like to tell you what that is. Um, the uh council president, uh Nina Liang, uh the mayor's office and Melissa Pond in my department uh have spent a great deal of time working on our communications access plan. Um, that is what the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is intended to fund. Um, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be used to start the implementation process of the Communications Access Action Plan that was paid for and commissioned by the Department of Planning and Community Development last year. Um, that was a total cost of forty five thousand five hundred dollars split between planning and PCD. Um, when we went through that process, uh, we hired a consulting firm uh who is known for uh communication plans, and the action plan offers eight recommendations to address communications access for persons with disabilities, as well as those who have limited English proficiency. We propose using this initial investment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to begin to roll out some of the basic recommendations of the action plan, such as designating a plan implementation coordinator, um, uh, who we expect would be an existing staff member, uh, developing a directory of bilingual and multilingual staff through city departments, and outsourcing interpreter services to designated qualified vendors when necessary. The fund would also be used to plan, develop, and display information about the availability of accommodations and notifying constituents that communications assistance is available to them at no cost. Uh, the communications access will include things like translation of vital documents and interpretation services, uh, such as sign language and cart services at public meetings. Um, basically, what we are doing is putting together uh a funding mechanism for something we've worked hard on for a number of years. And I'd like to point out again, uh, Council President Liang was uh instrumental in uh bringing this forth. Uh, I would tell you, uh, the mayor's office and Melissa Pond in my office uh totally embraced this, uh, and uh, we're pretty excited about the opportunity to provide those services. Uh, so that is the difference in our, in our uh year-over-year uh budget, and I would be happy to answer any other questions that the council uh would have regarding our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Fatsy's. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Tom Mucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Fatsy's.
Good evening, Counsel.
Um, a couple of questions, a couple of comments. Uh, first, could you uh provide the um, remember, a couple of years ago, you provided the map of um the projects, like pending projects and projects that have been approved over the past, you know, however many times. I found that to be super helpful. I kept a copy of it for, uh, it's probably still in my uh city council drawer, desk drawer. Uh, but, but I think it's super helpful, um, especially in terms of us thinking about um services and, you know, the census and redrawing lines that'll be coming up in a couple of months, uh precinct lines. Um, could you, could you uh provide that, something like that?
Yes, we, we actually have replicated it. It's a little bit different because we have so many uh projects to reflect. Um, as you know, it kind of had spots all over the map. Now it's uh, it, it's a little bit more refined, and uh I'll be happy to provide that to all the counselors uh after this meeting.
Thank you. Um, and what um, what's your, what are your thoughts about the current development in Quincy? Just, just overall, I mean, for you're obviously right at the, you, you know, right at the, the, uh, the, I don't know, the, the, the junction of it as to where development in the city meet. Um, you know, do you think we're, do you think we're doing a good job with where development's occurring, encouraging the right kind of development, and doing what we can to protect our neighborhoods while also um growing the city economically?
Yeah, yes, I do. I, I think we've done an outstanding job uh of, of, you know, really looking at the development that's come at us. Um, more recently, uh, prior to the pandemic, we sort of saw a uh, a flux of, of developers that uh, not to uh diminish any of them, but they kind of came to town and said, you know, hey, we hear there's a lot going on in Quincy, we'd like to take advantage of the, of the market. Um, some of them were great, uh, some of them not so great. Uh, I, I know many of you have spoken to me and I, I, I have said you'd be amazed how much the department and the board do not allow to uh proceed um based on the fact that they couldn't meet the conditions and they couldn't meet uh the, the work that uh is required uh to do this. Uh, it's important, as all of you know. Uh, the, the council has been very attentive. Uh, the ward counselors, the at-large counselors have all participated a great deal, uh, especially in the last year to, uh, you know, even in a difficult thing, uh, where we're doing this over Zooms, uh, we've had great performance uh, uh, as far as the number of people that have uh chosen to uh come online and, and, and watch the, the actual planning board meetings. Uh, there's been great debate. Um, there's been a number of projects that have withdrawn their applications in the last year, more than any other year that I've been here, which is six years now, uh, because they couldn't get to the thresholds required. Uh, much of it is, as any of the counselors will tell you, sometimes someone will come into your ward and offer us a uh, a can't-miss opportunity that just has too many units, doesn't have adequate parking, doesn't have adequate understanding of what needs to fit into the neighborhoods. So uh, we've worked pretty closely with uh the uh, the ZBA and uh, and, and obviously you and, and the council and the mayor's office to make sure that what we're doing is consistent, and uh we've worked hard to uh strike the balance. Uh, there has been a lot of activity in the last six months. Uh, as you know, uh, some larger players have come to the city. I would say that is indicative of uh what they've seen uh occur. Uh, many of them have been complimentary to us. Uh, we continue to, to build residential units during the uh, during the pandemic, and uh many took note of that. And uh, I, I would say that uh the, the developers have had to up their game. Uh, they understand that uh when we get an application, we are not gonna hear it unless it's a full application. Uh, we've been a little sticky about that. Uh, we get to meetings and uh folks would want to have a, a debate on whether something was appropriate or not. Um, we insist on pre-planning meetings so that we don't waste anybody's time, their time, uh, the citizens' time to go to numerous public hearings, uh, that basically, uh, some of these developers did not have their act together, so to speak, so we've pushed back hard against that. Without a complete application, you don't get before the planning board at this stage of the game. Even if it's a couple of things that are dangling, we want them. Um, I would say that uh it's uh no doubt, everybody realizes this is a great deal of development going on in the city. Um, oftentimes, people realize that uh what happens in the neighborhoods uh and in the downtown have, have similar impact uh to those that, that surround them. So we, we're paying a lot of attention to the sites. We're making sure that there's adequate parking. We make sure that groundwater is uh, is, is maintained on the lot itself. Uh, there's no runoff allowed, uh, and uh we've really taken a hard look at, again, some of the aesthetics that probably aren't in, in our uh ordinances as explicitly as, as we'd like them to be. Um, uh, there's been a great influx of pets in our city. Uh, a lot of uh folks may be during uh folks may be during the pandemic, but actually even before that have decided that they would like to have a pet, and that's wonderful. But um what's not wonderful is when there's no place for the pets to uh relieve themselves. And uh, we are asking developers now to put a relief station on their property so that they're not using all our public parks as a place to do so. So uh, those are the kind of things that uh we watch. Uh, we spend a lot of time asking questions as to uh, you know, th- their intent and uh their design and uh we've been pretty successful crafting, I think, very positive outcomes. Um, and you know, I, I think that uh one thing I will tell you is there doesn't seem to be a big break in the process. Uh, for a little while in the pandemic, there was, there was, they were slowing down a little bit, but uh, we still are seeing um full planning board meetings. Uh, we have something we call a will-hit um uh plan, and uh those will-hit plans are still robust uh right now at any given time. There are those that are ready to go to uh planning board. Uh, in some cases, they go to the Z B A first, but uh they are now coming forth. Uh, we fit what we can and make sure that there's adequate time for the presentations and adequate time for the citizens and uh for the councillors to ask questions and uh get those answers. So uh, hasn't slowed down a lot. Um, but uh, there's been a uh, there's, there's been a uh, an appreciation that we're holding the line on quite a few uh projects. If they're bad, they're bad. And uh, and, and you know, the councillors uh, and, and again, all of you have participated um in this. And uh, I appreciate that because one of our first questions that goes out to anybody that comes to develop is, have you spoken to the ward councillor? And uh, and they understand that that really is a trigger for us to understand that it's a legitimate process. And they're willing to expose that project to the ward councillor who knows that ward better than they do. And uh, it's, it's been an important process. So we're very happy with the manner in which it's going. Uh, it's been a busy year in other ways, as you all can tell, and uh uh, we're, we're pretty happy with uh what we're doing. Uh, the workload's been good, but the staff has been up to it and has worked very hard. So uh, we're, we're pretty pleased, councillor.
I'm glad to hear that. Um, thank you. I know I, you know, I've been up here quite a quite a while now, seen um a lot of changes in that department. And I think um, it's uh certainly become far more professional, I think, in the way the city has approached uh development um over the last several years. So I, I think it's a good thing to see. I think it's uh, to be honest, I think we were caught perhaps a little flat-footed with how quickly and how fast all of the development first started, you know, in this cycle. Um, but we've certainly caught up to it and I think uh, we're doing a, we're doing a fine job now of, of of working with those developers and making sure that these projects are, are, are right for the city. Um, you know, I might have an issue with one or two here or there, but uh overall, I think, uh, you know, it's a sign that the city's heading in the right direction. Uh, there's, there are plenty of communities that would, you know, they give their left arm to have the kind of growth that, that we've had, you know, just, just the last year alone. Um, the other question I wanted to ask you was about um affordable housing. Obviously, we work together in the Affordable Housing uh Trust Committee, but what um? Where are we currently with affordable housing? And um, what do you think? Do you think that's adequate? You know, and what do you think for, for the immediate future in terms of uh affordable housing we can do to improve that?
Well, as, as you know very well, uh, because of your participation, um, there is a time when affordable housing, uh, the Affordable Housing Committee uh worked within the rules that uh they understood on the board. Um, there, as you know, uh, there are options available to a developer. Um, they are not always their choice. They are the choice of the committee. And uh, so there are units that are pledged, uh, a little harder as we've learned with condos. We a lot of folks think the entire city is condos. Actually, there's a small percentage of the new development that's condos. Most of them are apartments. Um, and there was a period of time not so long ago that uh what we were collecting from those transactions when, when money was uh, you know, uh, taken in lieu of uh units. Uh, I, I would just say that the uh, the equation wasn't as mathematical as it is today. Anybody can come in, get an application, which is a full application, has to be provided to us prior to coming before the Affordable Housing Trust that explains um basically what the cost of their project is going to be, what they're uh, what they're proposing. And um, quite frankly, the dollar amounts that have been um, you know, pledged and put in place uh are far more than they were in the past. And, and you know, the, the books are, are wide open and everybody knows that uh, you know, there was a period of time when you could get away pretty, you, you were way better off if you were saying, well, I'll give cash. Now, as, as you've seen, councillor, um, you know, we, we give them options. There are some of them that are opting, you know, I'd rather give you the, the, the units. So that's good. We should have, be a little bit closer. Um, do I think we're doing as good a job of producing affordable housing? It's a two-way street when you uh are building new uh housing. Uh, obviously, some of the older housing stock um in order to uh compete actually are in a position to actually charge less rent. Uh, that's been a factor that we've watched very closely. And uh, we continue to see opportunities to add to the affordable housing stock. Um, and uh, and we're taking advantage of using Jodos, other folks that have come forward with affordable units, uh, veterans' housing, uh, you know, housing for uh, you know, those that uh really need the, the basic housing level. Uh, that's why the Affordable Housing Trust has been able to put money into things, projects like father bills, new residential units, and uh, and also be able to put money into things like the uh, the house down in uh Germantown uh on the way out that uh you know, serves the uh, the, a, a very, very uh important community. Uh, we opened up a project that has basically uh deaf housing and uh people that have had uh disabilities. And uh, we've also taken money and changed some housing units that were basically office buildings, uh, excuse me, offices in the housing uh department. And uh, these are now fully accessible units that are on the first floor of of uh some of our housing authority buildings. So there are a number of folks that raise their hand and uh want us to help them fund projects and processes that uh, that really serve a much wider range of uh citizens. And uh, I'm proud of that. And I think the, the board has been terrific. And uh, you know, we, we are, we are really uh working it hard, you know, uh, we do work very closely um uh to meet those communities that uh need to uh basically have to pay less rent. And uh, we're, we're working with uh that community very, very closely. And uh, I'm, I'm happy to say we're making good progress, uh, the best progress that's ever been made in the history of the city. Um, so uh, can we get better? Absolutely. And we have to. Um, it's important that uh what we do uh continues to uh help people stay in the city that live in the city. And that is a big part of our mission as well.
Thank you, Jim. And you're um, so you're, you're taking on one of the positions from um from the DEF, right? The um, or are you taking on two of them that are coming off the DEF?
Uh, the, the actual positions are on my uh payroll line. Uh, I think what you're discussing is uh the uh, I, I think they're the engineering manager and um the downtown events coordinator. Uh, they are on our payroll as uh, as, as so are the C D P G jobs. They are not in this budget. They are not um part of the general fund uh funding of uh, you know, from the planning department. Um, I believe that is the area that they are being funded out of um through the DEF. That one's in the DEF, I think the other one. Um, and I, I, I would defer, but I, I, to Mr. Walker, I think it's uh uh, some federal monies uh that, that have been used uh to support those jobs. But uh they, again, they are not my direct reports, but uh I am aware of the fact that they are on the uh, on the payroll code, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fatsys. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Our Chair recognizes councillor Harris and then President Liang.
Um, thank you, um Chairman McCarthy. And Jim, um, as always, I gotta say, sometimes we, we uh disagreed. But I have to tell you something, when uh, when, when we're talking about um affordable housing, um, when uh the, the ribbon cutting, which, which uh at Brzani Circle, you folks, your department, outstanding. I, I can remember six years ago, and I mentioned it that day, uh, when I walked down there, when we were walking around, putting pamphlets in between doors, knocking on doors. You could not even um recognize what was, was there. And uh, again, like I said, uh, we, we disagree, but I think uh your department does such an excellent job. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Um, if I could, councillor Harris, the Brzani Circle is a, a great example of what um we can do with other agencies, state agencies. Uh, the Brzani Circle project is actually in Mass Development's uh booklet this year of uh outstanding um projects that they underwrote as well. So what we've been able to do is work closely with mass housing, mass development, and, and get together where more than, you know, it's not just the Affordable Housing Trust funding these. We're working closely with the state. Uh, we're talking to them uh every week. And uh, and we're making sure that the outcome is exactly what you're looking for. We know that that was a very rundown area. Uh, I would ask anybody uh in the city to go through Brzani Circle and take a look at it today and understand that uh all those buildings have been renovated, all those buildings are safe. All those buildings have new doors, new windows. Uh, all those buildings uh have, and, and the entire area has been just, not just spruced up, but uh done over. And again, working with uh different agencies and uh and, and, and the owners, uh, it, it's been a, it's a great success story and and uh, there were times when that was a very, very difficult job to get done. But uh, I, I thank you for your comments because that is something that we're very proud of and the uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee has just been spectacular.
And on top of that, um, uh, on Washington Street, um, the uh thirty-two units for the uh veterans, that, another, another great job of um, you know, taking care of the folks that need help. And of course, the planning department, I, I, I gotta say, so that's why uh, motion to approve. And I can't thank you, thank you enough for the work that you do.
Well, thank you very much, councillor.
So the motion to approve by uh councillor Harris, on the motion, I'm going to recognize President Liang and then councillor Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I um, I obviously just want to take this opportunity, Jim, to say um a huge thank you to you, uh, to Rob, who I see is on this call right now, to obviously Melissa, none of this would have been possible without her. Um, but also to Mr. Walker and the mayor too on this project. Um, you know, it's been a lot on top of everything that you're talking about tonight with the work that you're doing, right, to take on this project. I know that um, you know, folks in your office have already been prioritizing language access for quite some time, right? And it's not just translation services, it's also ensuring that there's ADA compliance as well across, you know, all meetings in the city. And I do want to shout out um, not all the department heads are on right now, but a number of the department heads who in this past year participated in this study as well to make sure, because they are also prioritizing access, right? And when it comes to, you know, transparency and engagement, right, you can't have either of those two things if you don't have access, right, and equitable access for everyone across the city, whether they, you know, need um closed captioning requirements, or again, translation services, whatever it may be, right? Access is so important. And again, this is something that all the department heads, um, and Jim, you and Rob and folks in your department have been prioritizing. Um, and the mayor's office obviously supported and prioritized as well. So I'm just super grateful to see this come to fruition um this coming year. I know that there's still a lot of work to be done ahead of us on this project and that, you know, come next year, we'll have a lot more information to go off as well as um, as far as, you know, to your point, how we can do better with this. But I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't pause um and thank the two of you and thank Mr. Walker and the mayor. And also all the department heads um who participated in this effort as well. And to shout out Melissa again, as always, because on top of everything else you folks do over there, um, you know, for, again, the fact that you are all prioritizing access, um, is so important. So I really appreciate that. I just wanted to say that.
Well, well, thank you. And, and one of the things that um the study, and, and you know, uh, we have this study with the recommendations and it's a great study and uh, anybody would like a copy of it, we'd love to share it. Uh, one of the things that came out of it that was quite amazing to me and uh, you know, I've been around now for fourteen years is uh, one of the things that were identified was to do an inventory of staff in all departments. Uh, we have a great many staff members that are bilingual. Um, and uh, I, I don't want to show anybody my uh, my high school Spanish grades, but I can tell you that uh there are many folks amongst this council, and there are folks that throughout our, our, our departments that have a great uh, you know, diversity of language skills. And one of the first things that came out is says, take an inventory of your departments and the staff within those departments and find out who has those skills. And, and sometimes those are super skills, as we've seen. I can remember being at uh, you know, a number of uh functions where uh, some of the folks in my department uh who have multiple language uh skills participating, but also other departments have uh a, a great deal of talent. Um, you know, it can be very, very daunting for somebody to go and work with government where they don't feel that the translation of what they're trying to say is uh, I, I'm going to even use the word as important as they need it to be. And I think uh your leadership, quite frankly, and I, I think those that have really made this a focus point for the city uh makes this possible. And again, I think a lot of people look at contracted numbers and different accounts. And like I said, we've spent forty-five thousand dollars to get this right. We used uh federal money, we used uh C D B G money, we used uh, you know, uh, planning board money, about thirty thousand on the planning, fifteen thousand on the C D B G just to get this right and to make sure that uh we're not trying to do an ad hoc process. Uh, this is an important communications access opportunity for our city. And uh, again, I, I tip my hat to you and Melissa, because I think the two of you were drivers of this process. So thank you for your comments. I really appreciate them. And I'll make sure she hears about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All set, councillor? Um, Chair recognizes uh councillor Mahoney.
Thank you very much, um councillor McCarthy. Um, Jim, thanks so much for tonight. And um, I do have a couple of questions. I just wanted to touch upon one thing that you said, I, I think you said that they, you need more ordnance. I think you said something in your presentation to councillor Palmucci, something about tightening up ordinances to help you. What, what, what particular things would you be thinking about for that, just out of curiosity?
Well, I, I think that it's interpretation of the ordinances that were there. Um, I uh can tell you that when I first came in, um, there was an ordinance that uh really didn't get to a national standard. And uh, because the ordinance itself wasn't explicit, um, what we were able to do is actually go and use national uh nationally recognized studies or, or uh cost basis uh for contractors and just turn around and say, okay, this is what you do to value a project. So if someone is building a project and it uh, you know, their, their, their uh, their costs for that project are not being scrutinized, uh, then someone can say, yes, I just put up that building and it, it, it was a uh five hundred thousand dollar building. And uh, in fact, uh, it was more than that. And again, the permits, we, you know, on the front end, you see a permit and they're estimating. On the back end, uh, we are able to take a better look and say, this is what you're doing. This is exactly how many uh, how many square feet of livable space is what we can actually utilize. And uh, you know, we don't want to uh, you know, mess up anybody's program, but uh, you know, there are parts of the building that don't count towards But, you know, there are parts of the building that don't count towards affordable housing. So it was, that was an ordinance that was written a long time ago. And that's, that was the point I'm making. Ordinances are.
Did you just say affordable housing? I'm sorry, did you just say affordable housing? I just want to make sure.
Yes, the Affordable Housing Ordinance, yeah. It was just, it was being interpreted. And I think that a standardization is what we brought forward. The mayor's office said, be very clear. You know, you can't, you can't do this and expect the board to keep up with the construction costs and the board to keep up with some of that information. So again, our job in planning and in the Affordable Housing Trust area is to advise the boards. These citizen boards are making the decisions. The citizen boards are rendering decisions. And we're there to advise them and to help condition decisions so that they adequately, you know, safeguard the citizens and make sure that the intent that is behind them is is handled. So it's not to say that every ordinance needs to be rewritten. I'm sure they don't. And I understand that, you know, there is times, and we've seen ordinances changed by this council. There was an ordinance not so long ago that said, why are you going and using 1.75 parking spaces as a number than adding a 0.25 parking spaces? You know, on top of that, why don't you just come forward and just say it's two parking spaces requirement in this particular zone? And I believe it was Counsel Kroll that had had brought that forth. And I think it was unanimously supported by this council, and it made sense. And that's, that's the kind of ordinance change. That's a tweak that I I certainly support and and has made my job easier. I don't know anybody in this, especially in this city, that has a 0.75 car. And that makes it an important feature. But, you know, when we get into different areas where density and public transit is in use, we can adjust those numbers. The lowest number in the city is a 0.5 that you can get. But you don't get it because you show up and say, well, I want to use the 0.5. We asked for a transportation management plan that clearly outlines that, you know, in some cases, folks are going to provide transportation to the MBTA, perhaps pay for MBTA passes. Those are the kind of things that people can do to mitigate a transportation plan. And that's, that's really what I'm talking to.
Yeah. And when they do those transportation passes, though, those are just like, when you have planning that does that, they don't do it for like, it's just like three months they'll give them, right? It's not like they're given the transportation passes for a, it's kind of to incent them to come to maybe stay. So transitioning from that, I just had a quick question. You know, with the pandemic and the cost of raw materials, lumber, construction materials, are those things that you take into consideration when you're actually having something in front of you with the planning board and then making sure that they're going to be able to be able to finance the project that they're doing? Or is that something that we, do we even look at that? Do we get concerned about that?
Well, you know, adequate financing is really, you're not, it's very difficult to start a project, a larger project. Again, the planning department only works with three units or more. When when you get up to three units, we're talking in this city, you know, a million dollar plan at minimum. And the banks roll in and participate and make sure that, you know, these people are meeting their obligations as far as they are concerned, or they're not going to lend them the money. But I I think that we do look to see that, you know, when they come before us, it's become far more sophisticated. They absolutely need a site engineer to tell us what is really going to happen with stormwater. We ask for folks that have engineering stamps. We also, in a more expansive plan, we want to see a landscape engineer comment on plantings and the things that are going to go into a project. So it's important for us to know that there is a group that's that's doing, you know, what they do. We don't have the ability to go audit their financials. You know, there is a certain amount of, over the course of this project presentation, you you can pretty much ascertain if they have the financing. And and again, I wouldn't say that's 100% of the time, but you get a good sense of what they're doing.
Could you tell me, do you know what the percentages of plans that have come before you that may be approved? It could be, you know, units, I can't think of many, but like, maybe it's it's a multi-unit, gets approved for the planning, they've shown you kind of what the plans are. You know, they purchased the land at X amount, has a building on it potentially. They come in before you, the planning board, with all of the right credentials, it gets approved. But then soon, soon after it gets approved, it gets re marketed and sold. Like, how many that don't actually get built but actually get turned around and go right into the market to be sold?
It's it's a lower number than you probably would imagine.
I just wondered if you keep track of it. I I'm not saying, suggesting I have.
No, I I it's it's not something that was happening a lot. I've seen more of it in the last couple of years. So once somebody gets a permitted project, obviously, it's only good for two years. And so if they can't get themselves together, then that is is going to expire. That permit will expire. So we watch them, and and there have been projects where the applicant comes back before the board and asks for an extension, and that is within their rights to do. But there's not a lot of folks that are are coming to the city, going through the process, and then selling. Will I, you know, and we don't currently track that because, again, it from site plan, whoever took over that project has to fulfill the obligations that were laid out and the conditions of the site plan prior to getting their permits. And this is where it becomes very helpful to have such a good working relationship with Jay Duka and his team because they they are going to take a look at, you know, we look at the site. They look at the actual project and make sure that it's built properly. And so there's a timeframe there, but that that would be.
Well, I was just curious because I've only really known of one, but it was just interesting because I know it was one that was heavily discussed. And then it it didn't, it didn't get, it wasn't getting built. And I noticed it was on the mark, the plans itself were on the market. I didn't, you know, I was just wondering. So it only has two-year shelf life. So if somebody was to buy it and it was past two years, they'd have to come back before you, I guess, again, because we establish that. And then does that happen, too? Like, I just started curiosity because I know, like, I know we're doing a lot of work down the Ross, Ross parking lot, but like Fox Rock hasn't really started their building yet. So their perm, that's about two years old. They don't have to come back, though, right? Because they haven't started doing their building. Just curious because that timeframe is about, yeah.
Well, in the case of Fox Rock down in that, they haven't filed their COC yet. So the clock hasn't started ticking. They purchased land and they are.
So they haven't started this, when you say the COC, is that for just the Ross parking lot? Or is that for any, so they can remove buildings?
A lot of large projects have to, in Quincy Center, have to use a COC. A COC, that's an LDA-type project that would have the COC.
So the fact that they're taking down like the hospital building and and doing the work on the Ross doesn't count for any of that work? It's, that's just prep work, right?
That's right. They're two totally separate projects from a site plan and and from a construction, you know, thought process.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I understand. I just, I just, it's just something that, it's the sensitivity thing because, you know, got approved several years ago with the intention that it was, I think we thought would be further along than we are today. But that's, you know, that's what you hear and I was just, I was just curious.
Ms. Mahoney, do you have any other budget questions?
I do. I just wanted to finish that thought if I could. I just, because we, because you just mentioned that two-year piece, and I didn't know about that, Jim. That's all I was going to say in regards to that. So moving on to the budget questions, and I appreciate that. But I will also say that Counsel Palmucci was gone for a really long time before you. I don't think you interrupted him, but thank you. So moving on, Jim, I just had a couple of questions. I know that Counsel Palmucci touched upon the the engineer manager that's being paid out of the DIF. And I think it's the the downtown event coordinator is being paid. And they seem to be assigned to your, your, so you were saying that they don't report to you, but they're kind of assigned to, they're being paid out of the pandemic money and then also out of the DIF, but they're assigned to your planning department. Is that correct?
Well, the department, they're, they're, they're on our payroll code. You know, there is a, that, that's, when I say they're on the payroll code, that is, every, every employee is, you know, on a code. And it's, it's, it's pretty well, you can track it back to where it is. That is, those, those particular positions, as I said, would be something that maybe even Mr. Walker could speak to or Mr. Mason could speak to. But I, you know, I can tell you that that's, that's something. I know in Mr. Tremontosi's case, it's been with us since its inception. But I, I could speak that there was a, you know, as far as, you know, the other position, I'm not as clear on.
Which one, the downtown event coordinator?
Yeah, so downtown event coordinator. Of course, they're, they're a, you know, I know it exists. I know they've been out there working. I've seen their work, but I, I don't oversee their work product.
Oh, no, well, I just was curious to know whether, what that's. And then you also have, so you have, how many total employees do you have that are in your group?
Well, the the total employees that I have on the, I could, I could count them out for you on the on the city budget. What, it's approximately 16. But I also have CDBG folks that are funded through the federal government, through HUD. And they are within, if you will, the PCD world. So that is planning and community development.
Yeah, so I think what I asked for this list, it looks like they said that you had eight employees that are currently on your payroll that show up in this budget, and I think there's seven from CB, CDBG money, correct? Well, all right.
Yeah, I counted myself, yeah.
That's okay. And so, and maybe I'm not counting you in that list because when I gave it to me. So I guess my my curiosity is, and this is just because it's very difficult when you're looking at this, trying to, when you're doing the budget, and we're looking at a budget and we're just, you know, because you have money instead of being spent. I've said this to every department, so Jim, this is not, I just want to make sure that you understand.
No offense taken.
This is, this is for transparency's sake because, because like, because you know, when you're, when the first thing when you're looking at a budget is you're trying to figure out the beginning of, what's my beginning headcount? What's my end headcount? And then if I need to save, somebody, somebody retires or somebody else, we can kind of stretch the budget if we have to. We can't really see it like that when we're looking at this budget because this budget doesn't really tell us anything about, just it says, it could be two people in a line item, one person in a line item. We don't know because you have to ask that number. It's just a line item. And then also, then we have additional people that are being paid out of other funds. So there's nothing, I'm not suggesting by any means CBGB money is a good place for you to be having those monies be paid out of. But it would be great if we had, you know, maybe a separate line that would say CBGB, and we'd be able to see seven, what those people are and what those titles are because they could be interchangeable. I just, it's just something that's not transparent. I'm going to highlight it every time I see it because I, I think it makes it for a very difficult thing to be able to tell, you know, are they C employees, are they not? And they're being paid, I believe those people, those seven people are on the payroll for the city of Quincy, so they're also being paid healthcare and they're also being paid. And there's, and there's, again, I think they're being offset by some other account. But they're added to the bottom line of our health, our healthcare line and also our pension line, completely understandable. But we can't see that number, so we can't tell. So we're looking at that healthcare number. If we think we have even an idea of how many people work for the city, we might be short by the, those numbers by not knowing that. And those are important things for for us to be able to to see. So that's, that's no critique against your department. It's just a critique in the sense that I just think that this budget is set up in a way that we can't, it's just not transparent. We can't see it, and it's hard to tell. And and the two people is the downtown, the downtown coordinator and the engineering being paid out of the DIF. That's just another thing that's just confusing because they're being charged to your department. I don't agree with people being charged out of bonds, the, the, the downtown coordinator being charged out of the pandemic money. My question is, is that, you know, are there other things that could be charged out of that pandemic money that we have in the budget that we're maybe not using? That that we should be using? I don't know. I don't have the answers to that, but we don't have a rhyme or reason for these things because they're not being told to us. That's how the budget is being presented. So with that, I don't have any other questions, but that was really, that's really, that's just my thought on that. I just want to, to express that. So thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. We had a motion by Counsel Harris. Jen, could you call a roll?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Eight members, passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fassi's, Rob, and and the whole team. Great job. I think Quincy has a very special relationship with the elected officials and with a lot of folks where they can walk in, open door policy, sit down and and ask some great questions with you guys. And it's, it's really, makes it a lot easier. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Inspection Services, Mr. Jay Duka.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel Kane. On the motion, any discussion? President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Jay, Ian keeps hitting me, but I just wanted to extend the thank you because I know even before last year, obviously, with, you know, more businesses coming online, your department has been exceptionally busy with obviously more construction as well. But specifically, I wanted to give you a thank you because last year, when the pandemic had started and Ruth was trying to navigate, you know, coordinating with businesses, large and small, about how they're staying within the guidelines and restrictions to keep the community safe. You were working very closely with her and the department on that. And then on top of it, just coordinating with me and answering my questions on how, you know, we could be helpful on the council's side with ordinances or changes in ordinance to give both you and Ruth more power and control and making sure that, you know, folks are abiding by the rules that you guys are all set out to, to, to enforce. So I just wanted to say a quick thank you if I could because, again, on top of everything else you're doing, you took that role on and worked really closely with Ruth to make sure that you were keeping not only residents but workers here safe as well. So thank you for that, Jay. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Liang. Let me go to Counsel DeBona, Counsel Palmucci, and then Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jake, good to see you today. Just thank you for all your hard work through the pandemic in general. I was just kind of like elaborating a little bit on the new established short-term rentals, Airbnb's legislation that the city council, headed by my fellow counselor, Phelan, as well as a couple co-sponsors like myself. How is that, how are you imposing some of that regulations or legislation?
So right now, the complaints that we get for Airbnb or short-term rentals, we are writing violation letters. But I want to report to the council that we have just purchased a software called Post Compliance. City of Boston uses it. City of Cambridge uses it. This software identifies short-term rentals. Short-term rentals, there's 85 different ways that you can advertise. This software will identify the advertisement, produce evidence for court action. They will identify how many nights people rent so we can collect proper amount of taxes. It's going to be another four weeks before it's completely set up. But we, I purchased the software about two and a half weeks ago after looking at different various ways to enforce the new short-term rental. But in the meantime, we are writing violations and putting people on notice that they are in violation and that even though they're renting rooms in violation, they're still going to owe tax money.
Thank you, Mr. Duka, for that update. I really appreciate it. This, this body put it in front of us. We vetted it with a lot of folks, the neighborhoods. I've had some personal interaction with you as well over the course of the few years. My second thing that I always ask every year is how are we doing with the blights? The blighted properties? Where are we as of last year? And have we gone up? Have we gone down during the pandemic? Can you enlighten us on that?
Sure, we've, we have what I call the top 10 blighted properties. They've actually been reduced over the last couple of years. I work closely with the Attorney General's Office, who's been a great help through the receivership statute. One of them, we're clearing up. I've been talking to Counsel Phelan on one particular house in his ward. We have, I'm also dealing with one house in your ward we always talk about. We have, I'm also dealing with one house in your ward we always talk about. But we've actually reduced the amount of blight properties with the help of the Attorney General. And as you know, most of the problem with these blighted properties where we can't get people to get to court because it there is a deceased or it's a probate issue. But we have less than twelve, really, what I'd say the worst properties in the city. And it's a reduction from the year before.
Yeah, Jay, I just to 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 go back on all the years I've been up here, the sixth year now, we've really tackled this 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 issue. And in different neighborhoods at different times, we've come a long way. I will admit you've done a great job, Jay, with all the blighted properties that I get complaints from and you can do the only do the best you can. Some of them have fallen off the, I guess, the scale here because of some of the folks live, you know, as he's talking about a probate situation, the the folks that might have the house right now might not even live in the state of Massachusetts and you're trying to get to them and it's 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 taken neighborhood folks going over there and cutting it on their own until we get to a point where they can maintain it. But I thank you for all your hard work that you've done, Jay. I've been very responsive with a lot of the issues and I I hope we can really, really tackle and dive into this new system that you have from the Attorney General to help you out with with the Airbnb short term rentals. But thank you so much for all your hard work.
You're welcome, Counselor. I might want to add one more thing. I'd like to report. The court just opened up. I'm able to take fifteen criminal cases on August seventeenth. That'll be coming up and those are going to be Zoom meetings. So we've been without any court to go to, you know, since the pandemic started. But I've got twelve that they released that I'll be able to, we're having a hearing on August seventeenth by Zoom. So that that's a big help for us.
But thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci.
Good evening, Jay.
Good evening.
I just I had a couple of questions for you. First, a request, when when you get that short term rental software up and running, will you send to the council a list of the properties identified as operating short term rentals?
Yes, certainly.
And I like the idea that, or I like to hear the sentiment that even if they're violating the law, we're still going to go after them for taxes. It's like the, it's like how they got Al Capone, right? We're going to get them with the taxes. I like it. The the thing I wanted to ask you about was the the your department's effort to move, you know, to a cloud based systems like online permitting and being able to pull property cards or property jackets online. Where do you stand with that? How's that going? I recently, I don't know if it was for something personal I was doing or if I was looking up something related to a complaint I got, but I was able to find a ton of information online on a property and I was, I was very impressed. It was very, you know, I don't know, technologically advanced, which I find is not something I usually say about the city of Quincy and our operations.
So we've become cloud based about five years ago. We're well underway. We've got about eighty five percent of twenty two thousand building jackets that are digitized. We take no paper. Excuse me?
How many?
Twenty two thousand building jacket properties.
Out of how roughly how many? There's not that many more properties, right?
No, about twenty some odd thousand in the city.
Yeah, I was going to say, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And we take in no paper. Everything is, you can apply anything you can do in the building department. You can you can perform online. During the pandemic, we were closed. My inspectors were out there doing inspections from the field with our tablets. We didn't skip a beat. I want to kudos to my staff, everybody for working through the COVID. But we were able to do that because of the software. This council and Mayor Koch enabled us to buy outside six years ago. So it's working out really well for us.
That's good. I'm glad to hear it. And you, I think you were on when we were talking to Mr. Fatsy. So obviously, there's been a lot of development in the city and your office deals a lot with that from inspections to permits and everything. Do you feel, are you confident that you have everything you need in terms of tools as well as staff to to regulate what we have now? And we've added thousands and thousands of units of housing over the last, you know, several years in Quincy and your department has not grown, really no department has grown kind of on that same that same trajectory. So I, one of my worries is, you know, when it comes to services and making sure that we're keeping up the same level of service as the city grows as much as it does, I think, you know, police and fire, obviously, number one. And then and then and then I think your department is right there because so much, I mean, building safety, right? Look at what's happening out in California, you know, recently with the building collapsing and, you know, it's this stuff matters, right? It may not matter today, you know, you may not suffer the consequences of it today, but five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line, you know, this is serious stuff. People get really hurt if there's shoddy buildings going up in the city. So I I ask you this, I think probably every year you're up here, but do you have what you need? Do you think you can, you have enough to manage what's thrown at you these days?
I do. Over the past four years, we've been able to hire two part time. In addition to our wiring and plumbing inspectors, we have two part timers. We have a compliance officer we've hired in in person who does a lot of our digitizing. So as the technology has advanced and made permitting easier and less, you know, we've able to concentrate more on inspections and things we need to do. We we are definitely, you know, we're performing all the inspections we need to do. We're not missing a beat on that and that's really due to the extra people we've hired and the technology, the advancements that we've enjoyed.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear it. I always think your department is probably the one that we ask the most of for what you have. You know, you 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 do far more with what you have than I think any other department does. The the, you know, the the work that you guys have on your plate, you and your team, and the way you the way you do it, it's just, it's great. So thank you very much. I appreciate all of your work on behalf of the constituents. I know you're one of the department heads that I interact with quite a bit on constituent issues. You know, it's you, T-Pal, and the DPW are probably the big three. So you're always very good at getting back to people and following up. So I appreciate that. Keep up the good work, Jay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Jay. I'm going to be really quick because it's really quick to describe what you do for the city. I I received a complaint and I called you and it was around, it was work that was going on after five o'clock. And you said, I'm getting in the car. I'll be I'll be there in twenty minutes. And you were there. And I think that as a department head to to jump in and do what you do, you've helped me since the day I walked into office and I can't, I can't thank you enough. To just touch on what Counselor DeBona mentioned was the work and the software that you've purchased for the short term short term rentals is incredible. In fact, I know you told me that one of the issues with a short term rental that we have in Ward Six is going to be number one on the on the agenda and we we spoke. You were you were great. So I'm just going to, I'm going to end it right now. You are such an asset to the city of Quincy and I can't thank you enough for what you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you for your kind words, Counselor. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. And yeah, thanks, Jay. You do a great job and put up with us and all our questions, especially the ward counselors who I think are in to see you multiple times. Not me, but other people, right? With that, we had a motion by Counselor Kane to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. The ayes have it. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next up, Superintendent Mulvey. I see he's on the on the screen. Kevin, greetings and and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. We do have a PowerPoint presentation for you. If we can share our screen, we can bring it if we wish. Okay, great. And presenting with me tonight, Mr. Chairman, is Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Erin Perkins, as well as our Director of Business Affairs, Mr. James Malaney. And again, we just want to thank everyone for allowing us to present tonight. The Quincy Public School budget for FY 2022 is a total of one hundred and twenty million, two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty one dollars. This represents a two million, nine hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollar increase from the FY 2021 budget. Funding for this year's budget comes from three sources. The mayor's appropriation of one hundred and fourteen million, two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. A three million, one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollar or two point eight percent increase from the FY 2021 appropriation. Next is the projected circuit breaker funding of five million dollars, which is a two hundred thousand dollar reduction from the FY 2021 budget. Next is the KIAs Act Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund of a million dollars. This is for this year, this was a two year allocation for a total of two million, thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty five, a million of that was used for last year's budget. Next is the just the approved FY 2020 budget is one hundred and seventeen million, three hundred ninety dollars. The negotiated increases that we must pay per union contract negotiations, particularly QEA, is one million, six hundred and five thousand dollars. So projected budget for level services is one hundred and eighteen million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. There are projected funding in offsets. First, the circuit breaker, this is about an estimated seventy three percent of funding, which is five million dollars. Then we have the KIAs or S of funding, again, two million, thirty thousand, two sixty five, a million of which we're using this year. And then we have salary savings, which is represented by approximately twenty retirements at forty one thousand dollars per retiree. And that equals eight hundred and twenty thousand. Again, for a total of six million, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that line. The appropriation needed from city after adjustments to level services is one hundred and twelve million, one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. The appropriation from the city of Quincy is one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety one hundred and eighty one dollars. And the funds available for budget building prior to program changes and shifts is two million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars. So that funding will allow us to do the following. It will allow us to meet all contractual obligations for the 2021, 2022 school year, including percentage raises and step and level increases and the amount of one million, six hundred and five thousand dollars. It also provides two million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars in additional funding to address class size, academic programs, academic support, non academic support, academic expenses and non academic expenses. So just quickly, I know many of you have seen this before and I know you, Mr. McCarthy, have been as former budget chair has been a part of this process, but our budget process includes identifying areas of consideration, review, organize options to address possible areas of impact, prioritize possible areas of increase and shift or reductions, and of course, all this is done with the superintendent's leadership team. Determine impact on budget area lines, present options to the Quincy School Committee for their review, which they've done. Prioritize options, again, with the school committee, they have done that. Rework options with the SLT and then act on the options and then present to the school committee for their final review and approval, which they've done. And then finally come to the city council for your approval. Here, just as at a glance, is the chart that everyone is used to seeing. We just put this in there so everyone can see that our students are the center of all the decision making that we do. And then we work our way out from there, including academic classroom teachers, academic programs, academic support, non academic support, subsidized programs, academic expenses, and then non academic expenses. Again, we keep, we always keep the students and the staff at the center of our deliberations. Next is just where we're actually placing the additional funding. And for that, I'll hand the presentation over to Assistant Superintendent Perkins.
Thank you, Superintendent Mulvey. So to start with, we are increasing our academic classroom staff with but with two full time employees, and this is to address class size needs. So in particular, every year we keep an eye on our kindergarten students as we can sometimes get increases in that enrollment in the fall. And, you know, being that this year was a pandemic, we're also obviously carefully watching our enrollment to monitor any increases so that our class sizes stay within school committee guidelines. This is where the the largest percentage of personnel increases is. And so we have an increase of two full time academic teachers for the gifted and talented or the academic academically talented program. We are increasing this area because we are moving this program into the elementary schools. And we're doing this because we feel that this is an opportunity to provide greater equitable access to advanced placement opportunities at every single one of our schools. And for those schools that have historically had lower numbers of students who have participated, it's an opportunity for us to build and make sure that we're really targeting all of our students and giving them that opportunity. And we are also increasing a point five art teacher. This is to meet contractual obligations for prep time as they assist us in covering that prep time. And we have an increase of a full time EL teacher. That's to address increases in our EL student numbers at Montclair. We have an increase of a one health teacher. So this is in order to institute health classes at both of our high schools. So we currently have two health interventionists at Quincy High School and one health interventionist at North Quincy High School. We are keeping one health interventionist at both high schools, but we are also starting a health education class for 10th grade students. So we're taking one of those health interventionists at Quincy High, making them an actual health teacher, and then we're adding a health teacher to North Quincy High. And this is also so that we can collaborate with Dove and work on developing healthy relationships and make sure that we are providing our students with that information. And then also to give greater access to the flash curriculum to all of our students so that everyone has that exposure. And we have another point five increase in music, and that is again to help with contractual obligations for prep time. And we have a one point five increase of occupational education teachers. And this is, we currently have a point five carpentry teacher at North Quincy High School. We are increasing that to a full time carpentry teacher at North Quincy High School. And then both schools have a have a point five health education teacher that we are hoping to add, make a one point oh, so that as that program is really increasing and the students go out and do practicums and half of the students go into practicums or a small number go into a practicum, the other students remain back at the high schools. And so this will allow us to have this while the students are in placements, the students that are back at the school will have exposure with a certified healthcare teacher. And then we have two full time employees for the Special Education Department, and that is for our cares classrooms, and that is for students with autism. We are also increasing in our paraprofessional line, and this is to increase for family liaison. So these individuals are really excited about this. These individuals will work with our central registration. The goal for these individuals is to hire bilingual speaking personnel to assist with our translation services, but also to just help us increase our but also to just help us increase our access to schools so that parents feel comfortable if they have questions about registration, if they have a parent night, you know, after, after school, if they want to attend a PTO or a coffee hour, that this person would help us make the school more accessible for our EL parents and our families that speak other languages. And so, we're excited about this. We think this is going to be a really positive opportunity for our school communities and to help us make sure that everyone has access to participate in their child's education. And then we have an increase for funding for special education tuitions. We thought long and hard about this. This was a concern because we know that COVID, many of our students opted to remain remote in our special education programs for the year. And we want to make sure that we are prepared when those students return to school in the fall, that if we need additional supports, if students need more services, then we can provide within the Quincy Public Schools that we're prepared to accommodate that. We know that COVID has been very difficult on many families and on many students, and that students have experienced all different things during this pandemic. And we want to make sure that we're providing the best we possibly can to support them and get them back on track. And then another item that we're increasing by 500,000 is the Special Education Translation Services Line. We have lots of different things that we are planning for this line. Number one is to translate, be able to translate all of the documents that go along with the special education process, including IEPs, testing. There's lots and lots of documents that go along with that. And so, we just want to make sure we have the funding to be able to do that for our families that need it. And then we are also looking at a service that is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service. It's a phone service so that if families, if we need to get in touch with the family, you call the line, it connects you immediately with a person who speaks the language. And it's a three-way call. They call the family. You're on the line with both the family and the translator, and it's accessible all the time. So, we think that that's going to be, one of the things that we discovered throughout this pandemic is how important, obviously, communication is. And so, being able to communicate with our families, you know, we want to make sure that we have that ability to call them when we need to and communicate information.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. And the next slide is just an added glance as to where the additional funding is going and the percentages associated with that, just so that you can take a look at that. Academic classroom teaches, an increase of 16.35%. Academic programs, an increase of 26.13%. Academic support, an increase of 5.8%. Academic expenses, an increase of 51.71%, which totals the $2,904,591 in additional funding. And the last slide before questions, again, is just at a glance, the chart to see. So, you can see exactly where all the percentages fit in. Again, our focus, obviously, is on our students and everything that we build our budget on is focused on our students and families, and we work our way out from there. So, that is the presentation for you, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Superintendent. A great presentation and, as always, very organized. I'll start with Councilor DeBarna. Just a reminder, in about six minutes, we're going to adjourn from the Finance Committee meeting to open up the city council meeting, and then we'll come right back. So, I will start the questions with Councilor DeBarna, but then we'll break probably when Councilor DeBarna is over and then come back after President Liang opens up the meeting. Councilor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, for all your hard work over this COVID past year. You did a fantastic job. You're obviously never going to satisfy everyone. But I used to see you guys a few times at different deli shops and stuff, and we'd briefly talk. And I want to thank you for everything. I also want to thank the school committee for permanently going with a Wednesday half a day. I remember when I was on the school committee or campaigning for it, how many folks, they didn't really, really like a half a day, but they said that Tuesday wasn't that great, and you guys have switched to a Wednesday. So, thank you to you as well as the school committee. I was looking at 20 retirees have come forward to retire, $820,000 freed up, and that's great. And a $2.9 million increase, it's always good to be put in the schools. And I love to see the presentation from you, to see where the funding is going. Thank you for having it going to the special education areas and funding and positions, and always increasing in that. Are we around 9,800 students right now? Are we still at that mark?
Yes, yeah, between 9,700, 9,800 students, in that range.
Thank you, and that's, that's great. I mean, I'm looking, I'm just thinking over at Braintree, Massachusetts, and they had to cut 25 teachers coming up for this new FY 22, and we don't have that problem here in Quincy, and I want to thank you guys for doing all your hard work. It's good to see you all at the graduations as well, to see the kids have an in-person graduation. And also, Mr. Paul Hines, obviously, doing the proms, which was great for Quincy and North Quincy High School. I do have a question on one of the things. And it's just, and listen, it's been great. I have all three kids in the Quincy Public Schools. It's been a very challenging year, but it's been a very rewarding year to see them go to school. Snow days, I was kind of thinking about the snow days, and I, listen, I wish we could have a quorum here tonight with Council McCarthy, Council Mahoney, and Council Andronico, and maybe vote on this, but on the snow days, since we've done so much remote stuff and remote, you know, online type of things, do you foresee that those snow days could turn into remote days and then not losing those days later in the year? Has anything been talked about from the school committee level or your level, Superintendent Mulvey?
So, it's a very good question. Yes, it has been brought up at school committee. And as you know, during the pandemic this past year, rather than using snow days, we have gone remote so that we did not have to make up days at the end of the year. We had anticipated that being a possibility moving forward into the next year, and we'll certainly address that in subcommittee. But there, we are getting indications from the state that if school districts do go remote, that student learning time on those days would not be counted. So, in other words, we would still have to make up the time at the end of the year. The reason why this, we're getting that indication from the Department of Education is because recently they issued an advisory on heat days just prior to the conclusion of the school year. And if school had to be canceled because of heat days, they did not want districts going remote. They basically wanted districts to cancel the school on those hot days and then make up the time at the end of the year. We're assuming that based on that advisory, they may end up doing the same thing with snow days. We'll work with the Commissioner's Office, and we are also a part of a urban superintendence group with about 80 other urban superintendents, and we'll work with them to try and work with DZ to get guidance on whether or not, if we do go full remote on snow days, whether that time would be counted for student learning time. And we're hoping the answer will be yes, because we would like that flexibility. And of course, the details on that would have to be worked out with the individual unions as well as worked out policy-wise with the school committee. The issue is before the school committee in policy subcommittee, and that's something that we intend to work out hopefully prior to the beginning of the school year.
It would be great. Real quick, I'm almost done. Real quick, Mr. Council McCarthy. Just elaborate on that. You hit it on the head when you said heat days. This year, you got out on June 18th, and we didn't get into the last segment of June, and it actually helped out not having to use those, force those schools, snow days to be pushed out into the year. And it helped out when the folks, the kids could get out on June 18th and not have to go to the later June. So, that's the only reason why I asked. But thank you, Superintendent Mulvey, and I thank you all the teachers out there, all the administrators, and all the staff that had to put all the time and the energy into semi-remote and in-person learning. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I will adjourn the Finance Committee right now and turn it over to President Liang to open up the council meeting. President?
Mr. Chairman, so we're just going to go ahead and open up the special council meeting on Thursday, June 24th. Madam Clerk, could you call the role, please?
Councilor Andronico. Council Kane.
Present.
Council DeBarna.
Present.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council Mahoney.
Present.
Council McCarthy.
Present.
Council Palmucci.
Present.
Council Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Nine members you have quorum.
Thank you. I know we're sort of really quickly moving through things tonight, but if everyone can just pause and mute themselves and take a moment of silence out of respect of all the women and men serving both currently here and abroad, as well as all those still on the front lines of the pandemic. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the opening law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker on June 16, 2021, extending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening this special city council meeting via remote reedocompeting services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV9, Government Access. We'll go ahead and recess the special city council meeting, and, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, President Liang, and I will reopen the Finance Committee at 7:31. Councilor DeBarna, were you all set?
Yeah, motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilor DeBarna. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mulvey on the motion? Chair recognizes Councilor Andronico.
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy. Superintendent Mulvey, it's great to see you again. And I want to say hi to the leadership team, who I know is on with you as well. And I also see school community member Catherine Hubley. So, I want to say hi to Kathy, too, and all the school community members that are most likely watching from home. Just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you, your team, our teachers, the staff have done over the last year. I know that they have made a lot of personal sacrifices so that we can continue to serve the families and students of Quincy. And on that note, on finding ways to better serve, I know that we're looking forward to the summer for programming to make up any gaps that may have been missed over the last year so that we can start September right. And I was hoping you could just take a moment to touch on that summer programming and what QPS is doing to make sure that we continue to deliver the services that people expect.
Great. Thank you very much, and it is good to see you, too, Ms. Andronico. We do have a very, very robust summer program planned, thanks to the generosity of the mayor and the school committee. We have significant funding to provide an extremely large program across all grade levels for our students. Currently, we have over, well over 3,000 students enrolled, and they're enrolling every day. We have, thanks again to our staff, well over 300 staff members, who even though they've had an extremely difficult and challenging year, nevertheless stepped up to continue to educate our students over the summer. Again, it's incredible that we have over 300 educators willing to do that, both professional staff and non-professional staff, by the way. And I have to thank Mrs. Perkins and the SLT for putting these programs together. And I think the best person to describe for you what these programs look like will be the very person that was tasked with putting these programs together. So, with that, I'll just quickly hand it over to Mrs. Perkins.
Thank you. Yeah, we have, we have many, many offerings this year. We really were focused on two things. We were focused on providing remediation and support for those students who need it due to COVID learning loss and gaps in, you know, their education based on the pandemic. But then also, the other focus was to, for those students who remained remote and opted not to come back into school when we came back full-time or when we were in hybrid, we really wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to enter our buildings prior to the start of the school year. And so, that's why we really offered a range of different programs. We have our traditional programs, like our Bridge to Reading and Math, which is, you know, primarily for remediation. We have a middle school, a summer boost program, and we have our high school credit recoveries, which are kind of our traditional core programs. And then we are offering a Knowledge Quest for advanced learners and SOAR for, you know, our EL, our academically advanced students at the middle school. We have summer civics. We got really creative. We have STEM opportunities. We have Bright from the Start for students in grades K to 3 that will happen right at the end of the summer. They can go for a week and kind of get used to the routine back in the school mode again, taught in their homeschool by their teachers. We have Fit Math. I mean, we really got as creative as we possibly could to entice our students to join us for the summer. We have Friday programs. We have week-long programs. We have four-week programs. So, we are really offering it all. And again, as Superintendent Mulvey said, just thank you to the mayor for supporting this because it's been amazing. And thank you to the team, Ed Smith, Kim Quinn, Bridget Vaughn, Madeline Roy, who work with me and, you know, make this happen. So, it's been a team effort, and we're really proud of it and can't wait to get started.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. And, yeah, I know just how much work goes in behind the scenes. So, I can't thank you all enough for the work you do every way for the people of Quincy and the students of Quincy. With that, Chairman McCarthy, I'm all set.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Mulvey and leadership team, members of the school committee. Thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you guys do. I mean, so much goes into, not just a budget, but running the school system. It's really, it's really a tribute to how hard you guys work, how successful our school system has been over the years. I think our schools are so much part, so much a part of the success of our city. We, you know, we have an incredible school system for a city of our size comparatively. And our schools really help drive our city's prosperity. So, I thank you for that. And I was, I was very pleased to hear about the translation initiative that you guys discussed. That's, that's great. We're definitely moving in the right direction on that. And I'm pleased to see it as a part of your budget. I did want to ask one question about something I saw in the paper recently about the state reviewing a handful of schools disciplinary statistics that were a part of that. Quincy's a part of, I guess it's a state review of equity in student discipline. And you don't have to get into the weeds on it, but I just, what, I knew that was something we had discussed relative to the DEI position in the city, as well as the last summer, myself, Council Mahoney, Council Crowell, and Council Liang hosted a community discussion forum that came up as well. So, I'm aware of the issue to some degree, but can you speak to what the state's doing? And what, I don't know, anything else you want to say about that?
Sure. It was that the review was actually done on numbers based on school year 1920. And those numbers indicated that at one of our middle schools, there was a higher percentage of disciplining minority students compared to non-minority students.
What middle school?
Southwest Middle School. And so, what we did is we immediately began a program to address that. We began essentially a restorative justice program. It's similar to the program that we continue to work with now, and that has essentially spread and continues to spread throughout the district. We're doing district-wide professional development in restorative justice practices. Essentially, by that I mean practices where we initiate alternatives to discipline that helps promote a culture of respect and pride, not only within individual schools, but throughout the district. Since that 1920 school year, the state has reviewed us again, and we are in compliance. And that program is working very successfully throughout our district. At Southwest, I have to say, the new building in itself has instilled great pride in our students. in itself has instilled great pride in our students, and we see that on a daily basis. When they go to school every day, they have a beautiful new building. They are respecting it, and they're treating it with great pride, and
You're going to bring a tear to my eye. I'm so happy to hear that.
Yes, it really has, and we're hopeful that will actually transform not only the school there, but the community. But our restorative justice practices, and I have to give a shout out to our Guidance Department and our Senior Director of Student Support and Services, Mar Popil, with the support of the, obviously, the mayor and the school committee in funding the significant funding required for restorative justice professional development across the district and obviously targeted at schools like Southwest. It really has has made a difference in our discipline numbers across the district, including Southwest. Our doing very, very well now, and I'm very happy to report that. Alternative to discipline, not only does it improve the lives of our students by essentially making sure that our students feel a part of the system and that draconian disciplinary action is not taken in every instance, but this restorative justice approach is done so that students still feel a part of the school community while healing the wrongs that may have been done, but treating everyone with respect and dignity that they deserve and helping students realize that and develop those relationships. That's essentially what we've been doing. And to date, it has been very successful. We'll continue to do that. It's not something that's one and done. It's a continuous process that we will continue to be engaged in and continue to educate our professional staff, our guidance staff, our teachers, our non-professional staff as well, to make sure that a culture of respect and kindness is exhibited in individual schools and across the district. So I really appreciate you bringing that question up because I do want people to know that the district is making great strides in that area across the district.
I'm glad to hear. Yeah, anytime it says something like that in the newspaper, I think it always deserves a more detailed explanation about what's going on. I'll tell you, I got in a lot of trouble when I was in school. And the worst thing for me was when they kept me in school. You know, it was great when they just kicked me out and it was suspended and I'd be home for the day to watch cartoons and stuff, but they kept me there and I had to do stuff.
Yeah, we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, yeah, you guys caught on. And you know, you've done such a great job over the course of the pandemic, too. And we talk about adding to the difficulties that you already face as a school system and administration, you know, from the school breakfast and lunch program flawlessly just continuing, right? Realizing that there were kids that had needs. And COVID or not, we had to get those kids, we had to get food in those kids' belly because that was that's possibly the only meals that they were getting. Giving every student a Chromebook so that they could remote learn. It's just, you've done an incredible job. Your team's done an incredible job, the school committee. I'm just very proud of our school department. I always point to it as one of really the best things about Quincy. You know, and I mean it. Our success starts with our schools because if our schools are crummy and they're poorly run, the rest of the city doesn't function right, right? It's like a delicate ecosystem here, and so much of it depends on the school. So thank you for all the hard work you put in, the great job you and your team do, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor DeBona made a motion. Anyone else on the motion? Before we do a quick roll call, Superintendent, I want to say thank you. Quite a year to start, Mr. Malvi. You know, jumped right into it. As Counselor Palmucci just said, the mayor, you know, with his funding, with those Chrome notebooks, it was a lot of things. Got right behind you, and you got right behind him, and the school committee, of course, doing what they do, and we made it happen. And I know it was tough. Because half of the time, folks wanted to be home and half of them wanted to be in school, and it was a balancing act. But you've done a tremendous job as superintendent in your first year, and Aaron Perkins did a tremendous job as assistant superintendent, and the superintendent leadership team just got stronger. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And if you don't mind, I would like to thank, obviously, Mrs. Perkins, the SLT, Mr. Malany for helping put this budget together. I also obviously want to make sure I thank the mayor and the school committee, but also the city council, who has always been very supportive of the school district, year in and year out. This year is no different. And as always, we greatly appreciate your support for the school department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chen, can you call a roll?
Sure. Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Next up is Chief Paul Keenan. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Counselors. Good evening, Madam President. I thank you for the opportunity to present, although in a little bit unique way, the 2022 police budget. As far as increases this year, the increases in the police budget that we've asked for have been modest increases. We're not increasing anything significantly. Most of the increases on the line items are as a result of prices going up, essentially, negotiated raises over the last couple of years, certain offices moving into more, gaining more seniority and contractual benefits. It's been a very challenging year, as you can imagine, in the Quincy Police Department, but we've seemed to weather through COVID and the discord nationwide and the distrust of police. We're working towards a goal of getting out of those challenges, getting ahead of those challenges, and I think that we're well on the way. I think Quincy is well positioned. The Police Department is well positioned going forward with the end of the pandemic in sight, we hope, and with different changes that are being made statewide as far as training, standardization, and that type of thing. I think we're in a good position going forward.
Thank you, Chief. Is that you, President Liang?
Yes.
To approve?
Yes, thank you.
Motion to approve by President Liang. On the motion, let me recognize Counselor Harris and Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I got to tell you, every time, you know, we've had some issues with some, whether it was kids or it was speeding or stuff that was going on in Ward 6, I got to tell you, you folks, everybody that I've had to deal with in the Quincy Police Department, I just want to thank you. And I'm glad that we have a motion to approve because, you know, you folks do such a fantastic job, and I just got to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Just for your information, we will be increasing police visibility and presence on the 3rd and 4th of July out on the Squanam area, Squaw Rock, the beach, and several other areas in the city. But we're going to focus on that area as well to make sure that everybody is peaceful and safe 4th and 3rd of July.
Thanks so much, Chief. That's great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci, then President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Counselor.
I don't think I've seen you in person in a couple of years at this point.
I feel you miss me.
Yeah. A couple of things I wanted to go over. First is, I'm just, I'm trying to pull up the budget here. I lost it on my computer, but, so forgive me, but I see in the Patrolman 3 line, there's a, it looks like there's an increase of $1 million. Is that, are we adding, can you explain what that is? Are we adding positions or is that salary increase? What is it?
It's actually budgeted for 170, which was, I believe, what we were budgeted for last year. What happened was we hired about 18 people to 20 people last fiscal year, or about a year and a half ago. Those offices now go to their second and third step as far as their pay goes and their seniority goes. If you notice, there are decreases in the other lines, in the Patrolman 2 and the Patrolman 1. That's reflective of the offices going towards the next step in their seniority process.
Okay, okay. So it's not an addition of bodies?
Not at this point, no. We're budgeted for 170. Unfortunately, we have lost a number of offices in the last several months due to retirement. A lot of offices that we didn't anticipate retired early. We had a good number of them. At present time, we have 161 actual offices. I'll be meeting with the mayor within the next couple of weeks or a month to outline plans going forward to increase the staffing level to where it is budgeted. It's difficult at this point trying to retain offices and also to recruit officers. We're looking to hire in the fall, probably, put a class through, but it takes quite a bit of time to get those offices vetted and then through the academy, Training Academy, and then
I think you told us before, like last year, it's almost two years, right? It's like 18 months or more.
With the COVID, it was.
Yeah.
With the COVID, it delayed significantly, but from start to finish, it's a solid year and a half. So we're looking to pre-plan to get that in place going forward, so that's what those, the long answer to that is that's what that increase was, is the offices moving up in the seniority.
How many years have you been, Chief?
13, lucky 13.
Is that one of the difficult parts of your job? Is you kind of playing whack-a-mole with the trying to guess how many people are going to retire and how many people you need to maintain that staffing level?
It's always been a challenge because the process takes so long. We try and project. I know that we've got a number of openings where people have planned on retiring. There were a number of them that just came in and retired out of the blue that I didn't expect, you know, due to various situations and, you know, around the world. But yeah, we do try and plan ahead. It's a challenge, though, because it takes so long to vet them and to get them through an academy. By the time you get them out, essentially, you're playing catch-up again. So we hope to put a plan in place going forward so that we at least get a little bit ahead of the game because within the next two years, I know there's going to be a significant amount of turnover in the command ranks of the Quincy Police Department. So we have to plan going forward for that as well.
So we're down nine spots right now, and it'll take, what, a year or so before you think we could get those? Unless there are transfers, right?
Correct, yes, that's correct. At least, there's still three or four more in the pipeline right now that I know of that will retire shortly.
Oh, is that right? Okay. That makes me think of the question to ask is, how's morale? I mean, obviously, you know, we all
Depends on who you ask, but it seems to be pretty good. Our offices, they're all they're all providing great service to the city. They all seem fairly happy. You know, there's malcontents in every in every large company or every large organization, but all in all, I think
Yeah, we have one or two at the council, too.
I can imagine. But in general, I think everything is going forward. They all seem to have very good attitudes. They're providing great service, even through these challenging times to the public. You know, they've been there. The offices are out in the street. I don't hear an awful lot of complaints. We've done what we can in the building to keep them safe. We have a vaccination rate of about 85%, which I think is pretty good citywide, department-wide. We were one of the first, thanks to Manit and the agreement that was struck with the mayor of Quincy. We were one of the first in the Commonwealth as far as police departments to get vaccinated, so our offices are healthy and things seem to be going well.
That's great. And certainly no question about the professionalism in the level of service delivered by the Quincy Police. You know, I I think, I've never heard a question about it, even from even from people who have concerns about equity issues in the city. Very rarely have I ever heard a story about negative interaction with Quincy Police. I think we're very lucky to have the professionals that we have on staff and the leadership that we have in the department. So I thank you, and I thank the entire department for that. I'm, so I just pulled up my, I was able to get my budget book here. Can you speak to the to the mental health position that we have? And I don't see, where is it on here? Is it still in the budget? And how do you utilize?
That was never in the budget. That is, his name is Tim O'Brien. He's an embedded clinician through Aspire. His salary is paid for through a grant through the District Attorney, Michael Morrissey's office. We've had him, he hasn't been in the building physically in a little bit. He took ill himself at one point. But we still retain him. We don't pay his salary. We just get his services. As well as a domestic violence advocate that's embedded in the police department. She actually just returned to the building, but she was working remotely, as was Tim O'Brien, the clinician. So we have both those services available, and those are paid through the District Attorney's Office through a special grant and program.
Okay. I mean, I think that's I think that's one of the best tools we have. Well, I mean, you have, I guess, and pleased to warn, having someone, a mental health professional, and it it becomes more and more of an issue. We've discussed this before, but your mental health is such is such a driver of your calls, I'm sure, you know, and I see it in the court system. 99%, 98% of all the criminal cases I've been involved with as my course of my career have been driven by mental health or substance abuse, you know, substance abuse disorders. Yeah, I mean, it's very rarely that someone's a criminal who just decides to be a criminal and they go out and commit crimes. It's just, you know, you don't see it. So I just think it's amazing, very forward-thinking on leadership's part in terms of getting an embedded position like that. So, you know, kudos to you. And where do we stand with patrol vehicles?
We're in good shape. Most of them are in decent shape. We do have another another order, another influx of probably 10 or a dozen of them, but probably sometime early fall out of the capital improvement budget I believe that will come from. That's not built into my budget, but we're holding our own. We're in decent shape. Most of the vehicles, the frontline vehicles are within a year or two old. They're well maintained, so I'm comfortable with what we have now, but we, naturally, each year, we have to keep going forward. If you miss a year or skip a year, it sets you back a good bit of time, several years to catch up. But I think we're in good shape, and we're looking to increase the newer vehicles probably sometime in the early fall.
No other instances of spontaneous combustion in the parking lot?
No, thankfully not. We seem to be in pretty good repair and pretty good order.
Did you ever figure out what that was?
No, we think it was a wiring short.
Luckily, no one was hurt.
Luckily.
Well, thank you, Chief. I just, one other thing I wanted to note, and I figured this was a good time to do it as it relates to the police and the fire budgets, but, you know, over the I mean, you don't have to comment on this by any means, Chief, but over the past number of months, we've honored 14 groups of people up here at the council as COVID heroes. And it's been everybody from the Germantown Community Center to the Manit Community Health Care. So many folks went above and beyond during this pandemic. People who put their health at risk, their family's health at risk, to deliver services to the community and keep all of us safe. And the first honorees, as you know, that we made that we honored were the police and the fire departments, easily the most significant contributions and certainly the highest risk of anybody who served during the pandemic to the city. There was never a time when a resident called 911 for help and they didn't get it. It didn't arrive because police or fire were unwilling to go, put themselves at risk in the early days before there was a vaccine. These men and women and their families all made an incredible sacrifice to benefit the city. And I appreciate that. I know the residents of the city appreciate that. You know, it was a tough summer for to be a police officer in America, I think. There are 285 members of the Quincy Police Department, 234 members of the Quincy Fire Department, including all the staff. It's 519 people who went above and beyond. And as the pandemic hopefully is winding down now, you know, fingers crossed. I've had an opportunity to hear more and more about the experiences that some firefighters and some police officers have had. You know, in the early days, some of them were staying in hotels so that they wouldn't bring the virus home to their families after potential exposures. You know, I know you and the fire chief reworked shifts so that you had less interaction with, you know, folks, less potential contamination. While most of us were sitting at home, you know, most of us were furloughed or quarantined. Regular folks were let go of jobs, working remote. We asked more of the police and fire, and they did it. I didn't hear any complaints. You know, as you said, they're professionals, and they certainly showed it. We can't add to the budget. It's well-known that we can't add to the budget. We're only permitted to cut it, and that's a state law. But it doesn't mean we can't call on the administration to pay up, right? And I think that all 519 QPD and QFD staff members should be given hazard pay for this service during COVID-19. Other employees, too, should be considered, you know, like the Health Department, Inspectional Services. And I'm not suggesting we break the bank with this, And I'm not suggesting we break the bank with this, but that we put our money where our mouths is. We thank people not just in words, but, but monetarily. Give them the premium pay to our first responders, our COVID heroes. And we have a ready source for this, a ready source of funds to do this. The American Rescue Plan, the COVID money that we've been talking about over the past couple of nights that we received from the federal government, it specifically allows for premium pay for first responders. President Biden yesterday just called on cities to use that money to bolster first responders. We received forty-six million dollars in federal COVID funds. About four and a half million has been spent so far. Another ten million has been, we saw the mayor announced his intention to buy the Monroe Building with that money. So there's about fifteen million. We're looking at about a third of the, a third of the money is already spent or, or accounted for. And I'd say that compensating the police and, and fire should be just as high, if not higher than, than purchasing a building. If we took just one tenth of that amount of, to purchase that building, just one tenth, we took a million dollars and we dedicated it to premium pay. That'd be about two thousand dollars for every Quincy Fire Department personnel and Quincy Police personnel. I think that'd be a more than appropriate use of a small portion of that money. And that's actually what it's for. It was written into that. It's not my idea, written into the federal legislation that we can use it for that. These folks showed up for the city and the city should show up for them now. And I want to see that happen certainly before that forty-six million dollars disappears on new salaries and purchases that happen without any oversight or public discussion, certainly any input from this body. So I'm hoping the, the administration will do the right thing on this. And if the budget hasn't been moved for approval, I would move for approval now.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Palmucci. I'm going to go back to Council Liang, who made the first motion on, on the Budget Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Chief. I'm going to just echo Council Palmucci's sentiments that he shared this evening. And that springboards right into my question, which is something I ask you every single year. There's always a line item that I find that I feel like, oh, you know, naturally you should be asking for more in this line item. And then you come back and you don't ask for more, right? And, and this, I think, speaks to how conservative you are in your approach to the budget every single year, even though when it comes to who this budget serves, right? Ultimately, it serves all of us, right? Making sure that all of the men and women who are on your police force have the supplies and the equipment that they need to be safe in, in doing their jobs. And so specifically, I'm looking at the, the supply, health, medical, and then other supplies line items. So it's the two line items, the contractual. They're pretty low. They're only at five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And my thought goes immediately to this past year, you know, all of the different community individuals, right? Individual residents, but also community organizations that were working hard to try to donate masks and supplies, you know. You know, whether it's gloves or cleaning supplies for the vehicles, right? And first and foremost, they wanted to make sure to get it to police and fire, right? And so, like I was saying earlier, to Marley in the Health Department, right? This pandemic is not over yet and we want to make sure that, again, you know, specifically for the folks in the police department when they're still responding to things and still interacting with the public on a daily basis, non-stop, that, you know, you still have, that they all still have the safety equipment that they need in going out there, right? There might have been some folks who didn't get vaccinated, can't get vaccinated, whatever the case may be. And so, yeah, I guess my question to this, again, to Council Palpucci's point, we can't add to it, right? But I do want to make sure that there is, you know, a pipeline to getting these resources, you know, if and when you need them. Gloves run out, masks run out, you know, cleaning supplies, disinfectant, all of that. I just want to make sure, because five hundred dollars and twenty-five thousand just doesn't seem like enough to make sure that day in and day out, right? This is a twenty-four hour job for the folks in your department. I want to make sure that they have the supplies that they need to be safe.
We do actually have a pretty good surplus of supplies. We avail ourselves to a number of different programs through the emergency management system, through the Mass Chiefs. Wherever we could get PPE, we, we were able to, to get it. We worked hard to make sure that we had enough for all the offices. We do still have enough for all the offices. There were a number of community partners that came forward, Home Depot and Ocean State Job Lot. They provided us with a lot of cleaning supplies and a lot of, a lot of protective equipment. So we're, we're well positioned at this point in time right now to make sure that the offices will be safe going forward. So we've added extra, we've done an awful lot of extra cleaning in the station. Our custodian staff has been phenomenal disinfecting and cleaning all of the station. We have a couple of new machines that, the disinfectant spray machines that go over the entire station. They do that daily. So I think we're pretty well positioned at this point with all of the equipment that we need.
Okay. Again, I understand and respect that you always come in really conservative on this stuff. And so I know you wouldn't ask for it unless it was absolutely needed. And you get creative, you know, with finding those solutions. So, you know, just moving forward, I, I've still, you know, been hearing from some folks who still have some PPE and are still trying to find a place to direct them. And of course, you know, would love to direct them to both you and fire as well. So just keep us posted. Again, you know, if there is a time where you are approaching any type of shortage for any, you know, protective equipment at all and we can be helpful in that sense with donations or fielding those kinds of relationships, please keep us posted. Because again, five hundred dollars is very minimal for that. I'm glad you have what you need right now. But just want to make sure that that doesn't come up against any shortages. But thank you so much again for what you do and thank you for always taking the calls, you know, regardless of what it's about. It could be about something as, you know, simple as, you know, folks having an issue with their neighbor or, you know, just a random question that you seem to always be able to answer. So there's been a myriad of things that I've brought to your attention and you've always addressed them and I really appreciate that, Chief. So thank you. Be safe and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Chair recognizes Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, Chief Keenan, thank you for all your hard work over this past year. Very challenging. I want to thank all the police officers in Quincy Police with their dedication and commitment to the citizens and, and everything that's been going down for the last year. You guys are first-class, top-notch department. Chief, just a little bit I always talk about every year is our, our, obviously the substance use overdoses and Narcan. How, how are we looking in the, in the city of Quincy right now with administering Narcan and overdoses?
Overdoses have gone up a little bit in the last year. We, we do, we have a, a great resource, state funding for the Narcan. So we're plenty of Narcan on, on hand. All of the offices carried, everyone's been equipped and trained. We've been doing this for quite some time now. With the pandemic, I think it kind of pushed the opioid crisis to the back burner for a little bit. It's still there, still going on. We still see overdoses pretty much on a daily basis. I think the numbers as far as overdose, overdose deaths are consistent with the last couple of years. We've seen a little bit of an uptick, but nothing significant at this point. So we're, we're basically on the same track. But I think it fell off the front page of the newspapers as a concern for a lot of people and that's kind of unfortunate. I think we're going to have to probably ramp our efforts up a little bit more once we, we pass this pandemic and make sure that all the, the people that are afflicted are, are served.
Are you still seeing that it's a lot related to the fentanyl that's out there as well with the heroin? And is there any other drugs that are resurfacing? Anything crystal meth, anything else that's going on out there in the city?
It's primarily fentanyl, heroin, fentanyl, but mostly fentanyl. But we are seeing an increase in methamphetamine recently over the last, say, six or eight months. We, we've seen a significant increase in methamphetamine.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to thank all the police officers out there for all their hard work over this past year and, and all their, all their time. Also want to thank the retirees for all their service to the city of Quincy. I know a few of them have retired and obviously you're talking about a few that are more that are going to be retiring in the near future. But thank you, Chief, for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Your support.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for the Chief? Mrs. Mahoney, Counselor Mahoney.
Hi, Chief Keenan. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. I, I also echo Counsel Palmucci. I think that the police, the fire, the teachers, the, there's just so many people. The health, the healthcare department, just about everybody that, that the inspection services, all those people that had to go out and go into people's homes and, and, you know, it's, you don't think about it because you're not the ones doing it, but you guys were. So we do all recognize that. I do have a question and I'm going to be sensitive about asking it. I just want, I'm just trying to understand it. So court time, it went up a hundred thousand dollars this year?
Yes, that's what we're asking, yes.
Okay. And, and are you anticipating, are we back in court yet or I don't even know, so?
Partially back in court. Part of the problem was we actually turned money back in earlier on in the budget because we weren't sending offices to court. We refunded some, some money back into the, into the general fund. And there'll be money left over, I believe, at the end of this fiscal budget. We're returning some money back that we, we didn't have a need for. I'm of belief that if I don't spend it, just to say the spending it, I want to spend it to get a good return for our investment. So the money that will be left over, I will be returning some money. However, next year, we do anticipate that the courts will be open in full very, very shortly. They're starting to open piecemeal, but there's a, there's a huge case backlog, as you can imagine. Cases that have gone in, in various courts. We go to Superior and Dedham and Quincy District. And there's a number of cases in the pipeline that I know we're going to have to provide offices for. So once all the guard is let down and these court, the court buildings reopen in earnest, that will, will have a significant amount of uptick in the cases we have to defend.
Okay. And the other reason why I ask this is because I was looking at the, the, the year-over-year. It looks like it's been four sixty-five and then in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-one, that was, that was the budget that was impacted by COVID, I believe. That one, that was significantly lower. And then in twenty twenty, it was, you know, in four sixty-five budget and you spent two hundred and eighty-seven. And then I don't know what fiscal nineteen was or fiscal eighteen, but it was around three hundred. So we went up a hundred thousand. We're going up, you know, in, in essence, we're going up from those years up two hundred. So it just seems like, I, I don't want to, I'm just asking that question. So just to try to balance it out, so.
That's correct. That, that's why the, we asked for a little bit of an increase in that line because we do anticipate we're going to have a flood of court activity where we have to provide offices for testimony. So that's why that went up this year.
Okay. So I'm just going to say that, that I'm, I understand because we're coming out of the pandemic, you're going to be going to court. I'm going to be watching that next year though, because if we don't use that five sixty-five and then, you know, it comes in much lower and we can, it's, it's okay because that just means you didn't use it. But maybe we can go back to the, back to the lower number because I'm a little concerned that we're growing because we haven't used it traditionally over the last several years since twenty eighteen. And we've grown the number substantially. And I, but with the pandemic and the fact that you weren't in court, I'm gonna, it's, it's just a question that I have. So I know what you just said. If you don't use it, it goes back, which is great. It's just that we have to also maintain a budget line for the taxpayers as well. But I absolutely agree that the forty-six million dollars that came in, that that's money that can be spent to actually be, be used for, for other, other things other than buying buildings that could be beneficial to our, our police, fire, teachers and anybody else that was out there working. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Got a motion by President Liang. Jen, could you call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Kevin McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselors.
We got animal control up next.
I'll be presenting that as well. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the, the mayor has asked that the, me and the Quincy Police Department to take over administrative oversight of the animal control offices, which we just started a couple of months ago.
Motion to approve. Motion approved by President Liang. On the motion, any questions? Counselor Kane.
I, well, I was hoping to see Don. I, and, and I was assuming that he wasn't coming up here, but there's not a council to beat him up this year. So, but I.
Well, you can beat me up on his behalf.
Oh, my God. That, that poor guy used to come up and get a, get a smackdown for whatever reason. But I appreciate Don. We, we had a nice chase together a couple of months ago. And so I was hoping to thank him for the work that he does because I know he's got the, the odd jobs of animal control around the city. And I think of him in so many different situations. So I appreciate the work that he does. So, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thanks, Counselor Kane. An emotion to approve. Oh, Counselor Harris.
Yes, I'm, I'm just going to say that we, they, the folks do a great job. The folks who know my day job, animal control is one of the most important things when it comes to my day job. But again, we'll go to the vote. Of course, it'll be approved. Thanks, Chief, for everything all you folks do.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion made by President Liang. Seeing no more comments on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the eyes have it. Thanks, Chief. Have a great night.
Thank you, folks. You too. We appreciate your support.
Got it. And next up, fire department, Chief Joe Jackson. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Counselors. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight.
It's a motion to approve. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Sure. Motion approved by President Liang. And go right ahead, President.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief. Same sort of style and format to, to you as I was speaking to Chief Keenan about, right? Every year I feel like I come in and I see something that is explosive and what is being spent. And then you come back and don't ask for a penny more than you did from last year. And I imagine this one specifically is related to COVID. There is the fire detail line. Last year, four hundred and sixty percent more than what was budgeted, needed to get spent. And so I'm just curious if you can just tell me, you know, why that was again, if it's related to COVID specifically. But then also, you know, I can't add, but I feel like if that's the case moving forward, we definitely need to make sure to provide more support and services for the fire detail work.
No, I appreciate it, Madam President. And you know what? It's, it is related to COVID. And the line actually is properly funded. So what happened is I know that you're all aware, the mayor's office teamed up with Manette Community Health and the Quincy Housing Authority through the fire department. And we assisted with the vaccination clinics. And that's the detail, that's the detail line is the line that we pay our, our members on. So we ran it into the negative for right now. And all that money, Mr. Walker can speak to it better than I can, but I understand it's all federally reimbursable. So that's why that line went so far negative.
No need to elaborate, Chief. I think I texted you religiously for two months, thanking you for sending teams every week to vaccinate a thousand seniors. So nope, answered my question. I appreciate it. Thank you. And again, please be safe and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Liang. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris and then Counselor DeBona.
No, thank you. I just want to say thanks and I have no questions on, on, on this particular budget. The folks that, the folks that, all the folks that work at the fire department, they were out there frontline through the whole, whole thing. And I just say thank you. And of course, Counselor, I mean, President Liang already said motion to approve, which I will support. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thanks, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you just came on, Chief, Chief Jackson, as I know you were the acting chief and then you became the, the official chief. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
You've done, you're welcome. You thank you. You've done a fantastic job, which is your outreach to the counselors and myself. I really do appreciate it. Very personable and the, and the public, they, they really like you. So thank you. I also want to thank the, all the firefighters for all their hard work over the past year. Obviously, I talked to Chief Keenan about the overdoses and the Narcan. I'll ask you, how, how, how are you guys doing with that?
Everybody's doing pretty well, all things considered. Everybody weathered the storm, you know, similar. It's, it's funny hearing Chief Keenan talk. It's a very similar story on the fire department. It's just we do what we got to do. And everybody weathered the last year to the best of their abilities. And I got to say, everybody on my job come in, they did a really good job. They did, they showed up for work and they did what was asked, asked of them. And it wasn't your typical year, as we all know. So, but yeah, thank you for asking, but everybody's doing, doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. I know over at the, there's been some fires over, I think, this past year. Newport Ave and Beale Street, right there on the corner there across from the MBTA, Wallaston. How, how is that building coming about? Now, I know there was a little bit of displacement. How, how, and I know it's right next to one of your fire stations. How, how is that building going? And how did you do with the aftermath of that fire?
To be honest with you, I haven't had an update on what's going on right there in quite a while. But everything, you know, everything seemed to go fine. It was, there were no injuries on that day in question. So, you know, everything seemed to go pretty well.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work, your department. You guys are top-notch and first-class. And I appreciate all, all your dedication and commitment to the city and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor. I appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci.
Good evening, Chief.
Hey, Counselor, how you doing?
In the drain. So you came in right at the perfect time, huh? Right, right before the pandemic?
Timing is everything, yeah.
Talk about, talk about taking a sip of water from a fire hose, right? You did, you did an incredible job. I hear nothing but good. You did, you did an incredible job. Um, I hear nothing but good things about um, uh, about you uh, and, and the management of the department, especially during this, this very difficult time.
Thank you. Thank you. Everything that is support system. So thank you.
Good, good. Um, I just um, I just had a couple of questions, maybe even just one. But uh, we were talking earlier with the planning director about the city's growth and um, a couple of the department hats. Um, and I was just wondering, in terms of uh, level of service, providing a, a, you know, certain level of uh, fire protection across the, the city. How, how would you say we stand, given the growth of the city in terms of personnel and equipment? And um, kind of location, you know, location of our, of our stations?
Uh, you know, we actually stand uh, very well. And I, I took uh, careful note of the conversation that you're referencing between you and uh, and Mr. Fatsies. And I was thinking, you know, the mayor has been very good. He's very sensitive to our needs on the Fire Department. And there is uh, talk about putting a fourth truck in service at some points. I don't want to uh, speak out of school. Um, but you know, the, the mayor is very sensitive to our needs in the departments and, and aware of the fact that we will have to expand our services uh, at some point. But as far as um, spacing of stations, uh, it's, we really, we have the city blanketed very, very well. We're showing up within five minutes, uh, probably more than ninety percent of the time. So in that respect, we're in a really good position. We're very, very fortunate in the city of Quincy.
I'm glad to hear, um, hopefully that additional truck won't just put out fires in the downtown. But um, West, West Quincy, um, West Quincy could use a, uh, improvement on the fire station, right? How's um, in terms of, you know, thinking about uh, airborne illnesses and how are the conditions at the? I'm thinking of West Quincy in my head and, and so I'm asking citywide, the other stations. How are the uh, infrastructure at the stations in terms of uh, ventilation, heating, cooling? How are you guys doing?
Uh, we're, we're doing pretty good, kind of to your point and kind of along the same lines. Uh, I don't know if this is, answers your question directly, but we just um, made a pretty decent investment um, through our budget for, for uh, air filters, air cleaning. They'll actually scrub the air and they'll scrub surfaces. You know, the stations, unfortunately, you gotta play the heavy event out. Some of these stations, particularly our headquarters, nineteen thirty-eight. They're old, they're antiquated. The ventilation systems aren't the best, uh, but we make do with what we got. We're very, we're fortunate that we have jobs and we're fortunate that we work in such a great city and we, we make do with what we have.
And uh, do you think we need another ladder truck sooner rather than later? What, what do you, what's your thoughts on that?
I, I, I do. That would be my opinion. Yes. I think that a fourth truck is definitely wanted with the growth in the city. So.
And uh, yeah, I, I haven't looked at it. I asked Mr. Fatsies to update that um, the, the list of development and the map of development. But the last list that he put out, you know, whenever it was a year or two ago, it showed that, that um, forty percent of all of the units that had been either built or approved over that span of time were in uh, West Quincy, South Quincy. They were in, they were in Ward Four. Um, with the exception of uh, the new High Point, which is, you know, on the other side of the street from Ward Four on, on Quarry Street. Um, so we've, on that side of the city, we've had a lot of, a lot of growth. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, I, it's, I'm not offering an opinion, right? Cause I don't know. You're the fire professional. But you know, I just, I just uh, want to make sure that we're, we're as fire protected as we can be all across the city. Um, and I know you guys do a great job. But you know, it seems to me like West Quincy could probably use a ladder truck. But um, and we're gonna need a new station for that, right? That, a new ladder truck wouldn't fit in the current West Quincy Fire Station. Is that right?
Uh, no, it wouldn't. But there has been talks about modifying that station to accommodate a, a fourth ladder truck. And that's where we're on the same page. Uh, definitely, I, I'm all for West Quincy having a, a ladder truck.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chief. And uh, we're very lucky to have you. Glad, uh, glad you're uh, glad you're where you are. Keep up the good work, you and your team.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. Any, any other comments on um, on the motion? With that, Jen, would you call the uh, the roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Right.
Thanks very much, Counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And uh, again, congratulations uh, on your position and uh, I know you do a great job. Another type of guy you are. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counselors, very much. Have a good night. Thanks, Chief.
Uh, next up, we have um, DPW, Al Grazioso Engineering. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris. Real quick, Bill, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, uh, for the last uh, uh, we're, we're in, I think the fourth year that I've been the um, Public Works um, uh, Chairperson. Uh, and uh, being in office, I, I, the Public Works is probably one of either the first, it, it's the number one office that I think we, um, most of the ward counselors and, and of course the large councils, but the ward counselors have uh, de- deal with all on a, on, on almost, almost a day-to-day basis. And um, with that, I have, out of all of the budgets that uh, has been presented to us, that was the one that I felt that I, I, I dove into. And I, I, and had several conversations with um, uh, Commissioner Grazioso. So I, I, right off the get-go, I already know the questions, uh, the answers that I, from my questions. So uh, I'm just gonna right off the bat just say, uh, with every uh, line item, I, I would like to uh, make a motion to approve. And that would go right down the line of what um, Commissioner.
Well, let's, let me start with, with the engineering. You got a motion to approve the engineering budget.
Absolutely.
Um, any comments on, on, on the motion? Questions? No comments at all. Jen, will you, will you call a roll? Motion to approve?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Uh, next item is uh, Public Works. Um, Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Counselor Harris to approve. On the motion? Questions for Commissioner Grazioso? Seeing none. Jen, will you call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Public Works. Uh, snow and ice removal. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris again.
Motion to approve.
Any questions on the motion for snow and ice removal for the Commissioner? Seeing none. Jen, please call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Uh, next item, collection and disposal. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Harris. On the motion? Seeing none. Jen, will you call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Uh, Drain Department. Chair recognizes Counselor Harris.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Harris. On the motion? Any questions? Seeing none. Jen, please call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Um, next item, Sewer Enterprise.
Motion to.
Counselor Harris?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved Sewer Enterprise account. On the motion? Seeing none. Uh, Jen, please call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
Uh, next item, Water Enterprise. Counselor Harris?
Motion to approve, please.
Motion made by Counselor Harris to approve. Any comments on the motion? Seeing none. Jen, please call a roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Nine members.
And that takes care of.
Easiest DPW budget ever in the history of the DPW, right?
Al's trying to say something too. I don't know if we should just let him, maybe try it. He's dying to say something.
Say thank you all for your support. And um, I do have to acknowledge the hardworking employees of DPW. And um, as other departments were mentioned during COVID, I'm very proud of the job that our employees did. We were asked to go into houses for sewer backups and other things. And we put our, our employees put themselves in danger for that. Also, um, you know, with construction last year, we, we were full steam ahead when other cities and towns were closed down. And our guys were out in the street working hard. So I, I really want to acknowledge that. And, and uh, those employees should get credit. Well deserved. And thank you.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner. Um, you know, we've had Natural Resources, TPAL, DPW, um, you know, a lot of the operations types departments up. The city looks great. Um, I think I can speak for my colleagues where, you know, when we reach out to you, Paul Costello, Mike Norton, Larry Prendeville, um, it's done. Uh, so uh, it's a great thing to have. Uh, before we go, I, I see Counselor Palmucci uh, wants to add.
Thanks, Al. Um, I mean, thanks, um, Dave. Um, Alex, you know, I, I think nobody spoke because everybody feels the same way that you guys do such a great job that it, it just goes without saying. You know, it's like, you know, the gold standard we get from DPW. I mean, it's tremendous, the, the responsiveness that everybody on the team, you know, top to bottom has. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Walker or the mayor deserve any credit for that, but you know, we'll give them a little bit of credit for, for choosing the right people down there. Um, putting together a really, really good team. So keep up the good work. Um, I did have a question. What, do you know what your vaccination rate is among DPW employees?
I do not know that, uh, Counselor. We can find out. Uh, we did um, early on, when, when the vaccine became available, we uh, we encouraged every employee. We uh, asked them all to get vaccinated, you know. It was their, their decision, but a, a good number of them did get vaccinated early on. But I, I don't have that number.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think it's a larger city discussion, but I, I just thought I would ask. But, and thank you for all the hard work that you guys put in during the um, during the pandemic, during COVID. You're right. You know, nothing shut down. You know, you guys were, you guys were going the whole time. So thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Al. Thanks, Paul. Um, next item is uh, good friend, Mr. Walker.
For you, Mr. Chairman, I uh, I defer to Commissioner Grazioso, if that's okay?
Not quite.
Uh, the mayor's office budget is first on the list, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it is level funded from last year.
Motion to approve. Motion by Counselor Debona. On the motion, Counselor Palmucci, then Counselor Mahoney.
Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Counselor.
So usually level funded is a great thing. Um, in this particular instance, I think you know, I have an, an issue with the level funding um, of this budget, um, specifically, uh, given the, the, the council's ordinance to, to put in place a Director of Social Justice and Equity. Um, I've really only had uh, you know, I've had a private discussion with the mayor, uh, and you. And I've only really read in the paper what the, the reasoning was behind that. Um, I don't know that there was ever a significant discussion about that. But can you tell me what the administration's reasoning is for why we, why we can add, you know, thirty, forty positions? Including, you know, some folks who just work in the downtown, um, but not this position?
I think as uh, the mayor said, not necessarily in the newspaper, but in the private conversations, that you know, some of this needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. And I think it goes back particularly to uh, the counselors discussion, the council discussion about this. Um, that what the mayor saw, what was before him, um, in his mind. Um, and I hate to put words in his mouth. I think going to him directly on this is probably the more appropriate uh, way to do that. Um, but in his mind, the concept, the position, the department was not fully fleshed out. Uh, and to that end, I think in the subsequent conversations that he's had with you and the other counselors, he's put together a commission uh, that is fully appointed now, is gonna be meeting in the next couple of weeks, weeks, to really drill down on these particular issues. Uh, and if at the end of the day, that commission recommends a position, um, then that's what's going to be the recommendation. And that's what the, the city's gonna do. I think um, he kept the door open. I, I, and look, I understand. And I think he talked to you directly, Counselor. He talked to a number of the councils directly about, um, you know, how he phrased his response in the newspaper. Um.
That's fine. I don't, we, we don't have to hash that. I'm, I'm more about the, about the.
But I guess I, I would say is the, the door, the door hasn't closed to it. Uh, we would not have appointed a commission in the middle of this discussion uh, to look at these issues and to really drill down, uh, if anything was off the table. And I think he's been pretty clear about that, that nothing is off the table.
Have the, have the members of the commission been announced? And the commission schedule been announced?
It has not been announced, but very close. We're expecting the meeting within the next week or so, I believe.
So, and so just to be clear, it wasn't until after the city council sent coordinates, creating this position that the mayor convened this commission, right?
Fair enough. And that was a direct response from the council's discussion, deliberation and the subsequent discussions after that.
And, and I appreciate that, you know, the mayor's heartfelt uh, comment. And you know, I, and I said this to him when he presented the budget that night, that I was disappointed. But I appreciate his heartfelt words, uh, you know, I believe them to be sincere, that he's just not there. Um, I think we, this body's there. Uh, there was over a hundred residents who spoke in favor of, um, of this position. You know, they're there. I think the city's there. I think the mayor isn't. I'm disappointed in that. I think the city's there. And I think um, you know, in my opinion, it's incumbent upon leaders to listen to the people uh, that elect them and the people that they represent. In this particular instance, um, you know, I never expressed my disappointment. But in this particular instance, I'm, I'm disappointed that um, the mayor has not relied upon the many folks who have spoken to him, the many residents who have spoken in favor of this and the, the nine counselors who, uh, or eight counselors who voted in support of it. Uh, so I'll leave it at that. Um, I'll, I'll reluctantly move approval if it hasn't already been made. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me recognize uh, Counselor Mahoney, then President Liang.
So I'm just gonna bring this up again. I just, I'd just like some clarification for what the Director of Institute, Institutional Relationship, what is that, what does that person do? Not in the budget, being paid for out of the forty-six million dollar COVID money. So what is this? And then, and then how long have they been on staff?
For you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Counselor, I'm not sure how long, um, off the top of my head. Um, the job responsibility, you know, look, it, the mayor sees a hole, uh, and he fills it. Um, the focus of this position is an area that the city has been lacking a little bit in, in the past. And that's in terms of having some expertise in the real solicitor. soliciting of major foundation support, uh, for city activities, uh, city programming, uh, major initiatives. Um, we do very well when it comes to state and federal grants. Um, we, we have people that are, uh, well versed in that. Uh, what we don't have, uh, what we did not have are people that from the world of private philanthropy, uh, private foundations that is hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, potentially available, uh, to the city through a lot of these foundations. And that's the focus of this position, both, um, in the downtown, uh, in some other areas. Um, we feel wholeheartedly that this position will ultimately make the city, uh, a good deal of money.
So I guess I, I'm going to come back. Who is this person? What, what is their background?
The, I'm not, I don't know that we should be getting into who is who.
I was just asking, well, it's, 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 it's being funded through the, it's being funded through the COVID money.
Yeah, I guess I can.
If I could, I could just clarify, if I could just clarify. It's being funded through the COVID money. It's in your budget. The person is getting, um, healthcare and pension op, pension opportunities here. It's, um, not, it has not been, it's not transparent. It's not transparent. It's not. Because we can't see them and the only way we know, you don't know how long they've been on the payroll or if they were in another payroll someplace else, potentially, you know, in another bond. So, so these are important things. Whether you want to share with me who it is or not, there's no resume. You just got done telling me that this person's role is, um, to, to go out and identify foundations and bring in millions of dollars to the city of Quincy, but we don't know who they are. And it's important that the taxpayers of the city, the city of Quincy know that. And I've got to go back to where Counselor Palmucci said, which was, there was a request for a person to be hired for the social justice and equity and it was not, it was not, it was not something that was recognized as being something necessary for the city. Yet, there were over a hundred people that came out and spoke that night, more than anybody that's ever spoken before. And, you know, I remember in the paper, the mayor said that he didn't actually listen to anybody, but then he was able to quote people in it. That's a little bit disturbing. And then also, I'm just going to quote something back. I remember a time when this administration would say, every citizen holds office, meaning that everybody's voice counts, except for when he doesn't want to listen. And in this particular case, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars being paid for a person, a director of institutional relations that's being quote unquote hidden as far as I'm concerned, because it's not in the budget and it's not being described and we can't, we don't know. And that's important. Everybody that gets paid, every person who is being paid should be disclosed to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. And we can't see that because we have to ask for it and when we have to ask for it, we get told a number for per department. And when you dig a little bit deeper, you find more people. So that's problematic.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, I have no problem saying who the person is. The only hesitancy I have is that this person is not, uh, has not been invited to this meeting. He's not on an agenda. Um, there are legal requirements that the city has when it comes to employees and people that work for the city when it comes to naming them. And, and when, if they're going to be discussed in their personal. That's my, that's my only issue. That's all I'm suggesting is that if we want to talk about the position, that's fine. If we want to talk about the person and how this person operates the job, that person, I believe under state law is entitled to notice and should be in front of the body as well. That's my only concern. There, there are no secrets here. Everything is publicly available.
Is it though? Cause it's not, because it's not in this budget. And when we ask for these, it's not there. When I ask for the number of employees, the number of employees were not listed. This person's being charged to your department and not actually showing up in a budget. And furthermore, you are absolutely right. You want to invite them, invite them. Invite all the people that you're paying that we can't see. And then also when you quote somebody for a bond council, maybe you should invite them too. So it works both ways. Thanks. I appreciate it. All set.
Okay. Thank you. Um, President Liang.
Okay. Um, I just, I, I was actually thinking about, um, what Counselor Palmucci was talking about, and that's, uh, the point that I sort of want to go to and um, just want to make it very clear why I can't support this budget. And I'm not trying to, you know, sound like a broken record, but and, and I understand, right? I mean, even earlier in this conversation, Mr. Walker, you know, uh, there's a huge effort, a very costly effort that the mayor was one hundred percent and is a hundred percent supportive of, right? Like language access and having access across all departments, not just the planning board. I mean, there's plenty of things that we disagree on, but there is, um, just as much, I think, respect that we have for one another. And, um, and I do want to make sure to make that very clear and point that out. And that I do appreciate that. We've had extensive conversations even before this conversation about the DEI, um, person and or department, um, about a myriad of issues, you know, and, and again, even though we, um, are vastly on the other side of issues on things from time, like it said, it's, you know, not, I think, uh, equitable to the kind of respect that we have for each other. That being said, you know, I, I think I've been really clear about my stance on the need for this kind of work. Um, you know, again, planning department has done a phenomenal job. We heard from the schools who are making, um, uh, you know, additional efforts to provide, you know, equitable services and access as far as translation goes for IEP programs. So there's work being done across the city. I, I just think that, you know, to put it on departments where they have, um, this as a secondary role is not going to achieve what we want to, or what I would like to see happen, right? And I liken it to the fact that, you know, I think about all those times when there are projects being done, right? And folks are like, well, there's so much traffic. How can you put something up there? And then the developer comes in and says to you, I, I've done a traffic study. There's no traffic. Right? And I think about how crazy that drives me when I'm like, but I, I live here. I see the traffic. I'm telling you, there's traffic. And the developer is saying, I did a traffic study. There's no traffic, right? It's like, at the end of the day, you, you can't convince that other person what you see and breathe and live, um, and experience every single day. And, and that's kind of how I feel about this, right? When we had all these traffic issues, we had pedestrian safety issues. Time and time again, residents were saying left and right to all of us, right? We need more safety with pedestrian crossing. We need better management of traffic across the city. Congestion's been insane. We need more reliable, you know, public transportation. We responded collectively as a unit. We all said, okay, here's this new department called the TPAL department. This is not unlike that. The issue's different, but the process is exactly the same. And so that's why, you know, I feel like at the end of the day, whether or not it's important to me, whether it's traffic or equitable services in the city, if residents are asking for something, um, and it's something that we all supported and got behind, then I would like to see that move forward and happen. And I look forward to hopefully when it does, right? Again, Mr. Walker, you had said, this is not a, a no. This is a not right now, you know, and I, I understand and I respect that. I look forward to and continue, um, you know, respecting all conversations I always am able to have with the mayor. Um, but just tonight, not right now, right? I can't, I can't support the budget as it is, but I appreciate, Mr. Walker, again, you know, everything you've done to field those conversations, to work with me. Um, again, even when we're on opposite sides of things, um, you've always given me the space and the respect. So I appreciate that. And, um, just wanted to be clear about my vote tonight. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, President Liang. Um, so we had a motion by Counselor Debona. Uh, Counselor Andronico, right ahead.
Thank you, Chairman McCarthy. Uh, just to follow up on one of the back and forths there, um, I wanted to just clarify with you, Mr. Walker, when the council should expect to, uh, have a notice on who the members of the DEI commission are, uh, and when they'll be meeting. I was hoping we could actually set a hard date, uh, because in, in times past, you know, the councils asked for an update. We were told it'll be one or two weeks. Um, and I was hoping we could just set a, a firm date for that.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman Counselor. We do have a firm date, uh, for the first meeting. I, I took a peek at my, uh, calendar, uh, just to confirm it. It is July eighth. The commission, um, for the announcement, I would, for the, the public announcement of the, the members, I would probably suggest the week before, which makes it next week.
I just wanted to, to get that on record. Mr. Walker, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, see no more discussion. Counselor Debona made a motion to approve. Jen, will you call a roll?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council Debona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang.
No.
Council Mahoney.
No.
Council Palmucci.
No.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Six members.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Um, Mr. Walker, you're up next, uh, celebration, cultural and recreation fund.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Harris. On, on the motion, Counsel Mahoney.
Just a quick question. So, um, I, I believe at this point, every ward, and I, I know that this is going to be rectified this year, every ward has a holiday, um, celebration every year, whether it's Christmas tree lighting or, um, or, or any of those things. I know Ward Four does not. Um, this came to, this has come to light the last several years. And I know, um, I'm working with some people in Ward Four, including Counselor Palmucci to do that, but I just want to make sure that that gets, um, you know, recognized and, and, um, changed this year so that we can make sure that Ward Four also has that same opportunity.
Thank you, Councilor. Oh, go right ahead, Mr. Walker.
No, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any other conversation? We had a motion by Counselor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Um, substance abuse and prevention, Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This budget is also level funded.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Harris. On the motion, uh, Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Walker, uh, it's great that we have this department, obviously, um, terrific. A terrific resource for, for a terrible problem. Um, wh- where does it stand our, our litigation against, um, pharmaceuticals? Pharmaceutical companies?
Yeah, still, still pending, Counselor. Uh, Ms. Martin has been on, on top of this.
Is it okay to talk about her? Was she invited to the meeting?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Essentially that the, the legal work, uh, continues on that, Counselor. Um, you know, I'd invite you to, to speak directly to the director of the depart, to director of this office, uh, to get further detail on that.
Okay. Uh, we rejected the settlement, right?
We did.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, any other conversation on this? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel Phelan. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Uh, Dagney Ashley Tourism. Good evening. Nice to see you.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Harris. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Dagney.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And, uh, President Liang.
Motion to approve.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Harris. Uh, on the motion?
We can't cut individuals' counselors salaries here, right? We can't just pick one or two?
No, no, Counselor Palmucci, you cannot.
All right.
And it has not, and I, let me just be clear, it has not increased.
No, it hasn't. All right. Seeing no comments on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, that, uh, wraps up our finance committee meeting at eight fifty-three. I will turn it over to President Liang and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. All right. So we'll go ahead and open back up, um, the special city council meeting, which we're holding here tonight because we do need to vote on the budget, um, in the body, the formal body of the council as well. So with that, I'm just going to go straight to the agenda items and then from there we will adjourn. So Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, twenty twenty-one dash zero four nine in appropriation fiscal twenty twenty-two general fund budget.
Uh, President, I make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Debona. Any questions or comments on this item? All right, Madam Clerk. Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Mahoney.
I just wanted to, for clarification, I was just going to ask Susan O'Connor to tell us what the, I know we had some cuts last night with the, I know this was mentioned, but what's the final budget and then what's the total increase?
Yes, Counselor. So the budget that was presented to you originally was three hundred and forty-six million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, three ninety-seven thirteen. The cuts that the council made totaled six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, zero eighty-nine, oh thirty-five, leaving the final budget at three hundred and forty-five million, nine eighty-four, three oh seven point seventy-eight.
So the total, um, total increase from, from last year, then?
Um, one moment. I like the whistling. So the budget last year was in the amount of, one moment.
Just wanted to know the, the increase.
Yeah. One second. I'm just waiting for that total to load into my computer. Sorry.
Counselor Mahoney, we're already.
The original budget that was put before you last year was three hundred and forty million, one one nine, one twenty-five point ninety-one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Did you have any other questions, Counselor?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to say there's, uh, uh, there's a lot in this budget that I support. Um, there's, uh, very little in it that I don't support. Uh, the things that I don't support, I, personally, I moved to cut whether they passed or not, just the little of the body or not. I, I feel as though I've made my, um, my, my, my positions on this budget very clear. Um, so, uh, I, I just want to explain my vote. I'm going to vote no. Um, and it's, and it's purely because of the unfunded position, uh, that the mayor chose to ignore this body and many, many residents, um, about. So I, that's the reason why I'm going to vote against this, um, against this budget this year, despite there being so many, uh, very positive things in it that I do support, um, and that I support along the way in the light item votes like library, DPW, um, police and fire. Um, I also just want to say, uh, not because I'm voting against it, but, but, but just in general, uh, we know how much we're spending right now. It's June twenty-fourth. So in six months, come December and we have to set the tax rate, you know, this, I, I always hear a lot about fiscal conservatism, but this, this is the bill that we have to pay in December. Uh, we don't, we don't get to spend this money and then not pay for it in December. Um, and I think it's always helpful for all of us to keep that in mind that if, if we're in support of the budget, this is how much money we're spending. December is when the bill comes due. So I, in this particular vote, uh, this particular budget, this particular year, for that one reason, um, otherwise I support the budget, I am going to vote against it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Debona?
Thank you, Ma- Madam, um, President. Uh, I, I just want to, um, I, this budget process over the last six years, this is probably, I would say, the most exciting, um, since my first year being on the council with Joe Finn. And I, I want to thank, um, my colleague Anthony Dronico, his first, um, budget cycle. And I want to thank Counselor, um, Chuck Phelan for a second one this time around on the council. It's been very exciting to know that the city council is just as strong as you can get five votes. And during this budget cycle, we cut six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. It's the most I think we've ever cut as a council, as a group. And I think the tide is changing. I think the council has gotten very strong, um, as a group. And, um, we have a lot of different personalities. And I thought it really shined as a group. Um, and, um, and other prior votes with other things leading up to this. So I just want to say thank you to the other co, my colleagues. I haven't felt this way in a long time that the city council kind of, you know, we, we disagree on certain votes, but we all kind of respect each other. And I know that I respect all of you. And, um, I just want to thank you for this big budget cycle this year. Um, and, um, thank you for the new, uh, folks that have come on because I think it's important. The checks and balances of a, of a true government is very important. So, um, I had some folks sway left, far left, some are right, some, but. So I had some folks sway left, far left, some are right, but at the end of the day, to be honest with you, it was exciting. It really was. So thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I see Counsel Harris, how's it, Sanders? Counsel Harris?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Last night, last night I had some technical difficulties. And Madam President, I, as you pointed out, I had two, two logins, one with an iPhone and one with my laptop. And unfortunately, unfortunately, I voted in error on my part when it came to the veteran, not the veterans, the elder services. And that vote was a $400 cut. I made a mistake. I think it's probably too late, but I will, my family, how much was it, Madam? Susan, do you know how much that was? Was it 400? Whatever it is, I'm going to be putting in front of the council, the first meeting, a gift of $1,000 to the elder services, because the last thing I would ever think of doing is cutting anything, no matter whether it was spent or not spent, because of all of the great work that was done during COVID and by the elder services department. And, you know, traveling out to homes, you talk about frontline, that was, so I, you know, waking up this morning, I said to myself, it's one of those things, like a Hollywood movie, what, what did I vote on? But yeah, I voted the wrong way and I feel that way. But I'm going to finish up by talking about, we've had some tough meetings over the, over the last few weeks, especially something that really disturbs me is when somebody has an opposite opinion on this council. When you have an opposite opinion, it's an opinion that I know ward counselors, they're thinking about, they're thinking about the people they represent, and they usually know how the people that they represent feel. And we get, whether or not it's a handful of emails, two emails, one phone call, two phone calls, we get emails from other wards on certain issues. And I think at times, when I hear ward counselors, including myself, I'm not going to call people out because they don't agree with what I'm saying. And I don't think that a counselor, any of our counselors, counselors should be worried about how we, how we do things, because we're all in this for the people of Quincy. So all I have to say is that I really love serving on this council and I've made a lot of friends in the last six years. I certainly hope that we change the direction of how we conduct ourselves when we're representing the people that put us here. And that's all I have to say about sports tonight. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Counsel. I do want to respect your wish, though, and just clarify on my end, I believe, Madam Clerk, we already voted in committee, so we can't undo the vote, Henry. I just, I want to be mindful of Counsel Harris's wish as well.
We sure can.
Can somebody help me with that process? I'm sorry, I'm not.
Yeah, no, no, I was waiting for Nicole. You would ask Nicole. So I do, we can, we can vote, you can, so first of all, it's a new, it's a new matter. Those votes that we take on individual lines don't necessarily relate to the final budget. That's just a process we go through. It holds no, it holds no kind of sway. But anybody can move to reconsider any matter that we've already voted for, voted on, if there were a member of the, if they were on the prevailing side. So if you were on the side, I don't remember what the vote count was, but someone who was on the side of that, that came out on top, the majority, they can move to reconsider and then we just re-vote on it. I was mind scanning. I would also see Counsel Phelan has his hand up.
Yes.
Counsel Harris was on the other side. He can definitely move for reconsideration.
I would like to move for reconsideration, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harris, and thank you, Counsel Phelan and Counsel Pamucci for being little parliamentarians tonight. So we have a motion. I believe we need a second for this as well to reconsider that cut. Thank you, Counsel Pamucci. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please? This, I'm sorry, let me just clarify. This is a vote to, to, to not have the cut go through, correct?
To restore the $400.
Correct, yes.
I'm sorry, can you clarify? What is it?
Yes, Counsel DeBona, so there's a motion right now to restore the cut that I proposed for $425 out of elder services. So if you vote yes, you're voting to put the money back in. If you're voting no, you're voting to keep the money out. And it sounds good, Counsel DeBona?
I have it down.
Oh, okay.
Right, okay.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Jen, would you mind calling the roll for this, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Counsel Andronico.
No.
Counsel Kane.
No.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
No.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel Pamucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman McCarthy.
Yes.
Five yeses and four nays.
Okay, so it's going to be restored, then? Thank you. Thank you all for being flexible with that. Go ahead, Counsel Pamucci, and then I do want to make sure to get to Counsel Phelan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, my point of order is, I just want to know if Counsel Harris is still going to donate $1,000 now that the money's.
That's not a point of order. Thank you very much. Moving on, Counsel Phelan, please. We're not going to spot each other here, none of that. Counsel Phelan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted, I'm not going to belabor the point, we've been late tonight and we've had our agreements and disagreements. And we've had a lot of agreements on the way the budget went. So I'm not going to belabor a lot of these points, but I would like to thank particularly our auditor. She was phenomenal. I went and saw her several times during this, and she always cleared up the lines and let me know what was going on. Jen Manning in the council office was absolutely fantastic. We had a shift and changed dates and all that. And you would see the office staff running around, making sure that we were getting all the right materials on and really knowing what to do when we were voting. When we're voting, from the time I was on the council before to the time today, the information we get and the stuff we're getting is absolutely fantastic. And you can either vote yes or no. And you know, at least you know the information you begin, coming from the council office, our auditor, our council staff, is, is the right information. And whether it's a question on something you didn't see in the budget or something like that, they can always track it down and find it for you. So I just have to give kudos to the, to the, to the office staff. They were, they were running around, jumping around, making sure the dates, making sure we got the information. Any call I made, particularly to Sue, I didn't understand something, she had an answer or she would give me the answer. So the entire office staff, I would like to thank them. And also Chairman McCarthy. There's a lot going on and he, he kept the thing going and it was a very busy, when I first saw two meetings, two nights, I never thought we'd get done. So I'm gonna, I'm just, the only thing I wanted to do was thank those people. A lot of times, they do the work in the background, you know, Clerk Crispo there, they just do a fantastic job. And in a real pinch, they pulled everything together. And I would like to publicly thank them for all the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Phelan. Yeah, no, I think I speak for all of us when I say that without Jen, Susan, Nikki, Ann and Kathy, I think we'd all be lost causes. Thank you, Counsel Phelan, for taking the time to do that. All right, so again, just to go back to it, we are currently discussing the first item here on the special council night, which is to approve the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. There is a motion to approve followed by a second. Any other questions or comments before we move to a vote? Counsel Mahoney?
So I too just want to clarify, I will be voting no for the budget. I think the reasons are, are, are from our, our bond meeting and to, to the fact that when I'm going through the budget and finding, you know, there's, there's missing, there's missing pieces to the budget. And the most important thing that we don't have and it needs to change going forward is being transparent with the number of people that we have working in the city, whether they're being paid through the general fund or through other things, because we shouldn't be finding those at the ninth hour or the 11th hour coming in. And those things need to be more transparent, otherwise we're just not really setting a real budget forward for people to know how we're spending money, whether it's through a bond or through the, through the general budget. It's just, it's just not acceptable. So I just wanted to make sure that I was on the record for saying that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. And I just want to clarify for folks too, so we are voting on the new amended amount now with the additional $425. So let me just do the math really quick. So the new amount that we're voting on is 345,984,732.78. Any other questions or comments before? Thank you, Madam Auditor. I see you nodding your head. I did really well with the calculator tonight. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Pamucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Seven members. Motion passed.
Thank you. So we'll go to item number two, please.
2021-050, an appropriation for fiscal 2022 sewer enterprise budget.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Phelan. Any questions or comments on this appropriation for the sewer enterprise budget? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Pamucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Could we go to number three, please?
Number three, 2021-051, an appropriation fiscal 2022 water enterprise budget.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.